Okay. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for viewing and attending the November 15th meeting of the Arcata City Council. The City Council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. Our first item this evening is a land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands that we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Weot people. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Weot language as gudini, meaning "over in the woods" or "among the redwoods." Past action by local, state, and federal governments have removed the Weot and other indigenous peoples from their land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Weot community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. If you would like to, please join for the flag salute. Before the city clerk calls the roll, we do have one absent council member and one council member that is joining us via Zoom this evening. Due to the current state law, Assembly Bill 2449, this allows council members to attend remotely under narrow circumstances. So in short, at least a quorum of our legislative body needs to be here in person. We have three of us here tonight, which is a quorum. The member notifies the city of their need to participate remotely for what is called "just cause," and "just cause," under the law is defined narrowly as contagious illness, caregiving for a family member, travel for official city business, are some of the most commonly accepted reasons. So Councilmember White is sick this evening, not morning, and will be participating in this meeting remotely under the provisions of the law. So Councilmember White will be required to keep her video functions on, except for any items that she is recusing herself from. And so we do need to confirm, so Councilmember White, if you are out there and can't hear me, please confirm your attendance is due to illness, and then please identify if there is anyone 18 years of age or older in the room with you and your relation to them.
Yes, I confirm I am not well, and the only person in the room is my great dane. Were there any other questions that I missed?
Nope, that is it. So thank you. And also, Councilmember Stillman wanted to participate remotely tonight, but her need did not meet the parameters of the state law for the travel that she is on right now. So with that, will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Schaefer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Stillman is absent, but we do have a quorum.
Great. Thank you. If you wish to make public comment at tonight's meeting during either the two open public comment periods, which are for items not on the agenda, or for an individual agendized item, there are three ways to do so. If you are here in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting public comment, and please wait kind of behind the line and let folks come up to the podium as they are ready to speak. If you're logged into Zoom, you can click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on the item you wish to speak on. And if you're on your phone, you can press *9 to raise your Zoom hand, and when it is your turn, you will be prompted to dial *6. For each item, we take in-person public comment first and then move to online comments. We will not be going back and forth. So if you're wanting to comment, line up at the podium or raise your electronic hand as soon as we are accepting comment on that item. So our first, next item on the agenda tonight is ceremonial matters. And so we have a few proclamations tonight, and so the first one is a proclamation in recognition of Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, November 11th through 18th, 2023. And we will have Winchell Dillonbeck here to accept it. And so recognizing November 11th through 18th as Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, whereas the theme of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week 2023 is "Being Homeless Is Not a Crime and Housing is a Human Right." And whereas people from all walks of life, including individuals, families with children, employed and unemployed workers, elderly residents, veterans, disabled individuals, and youth are impacted by hunger and homelessness. And whereas the community recognizes that hunger and homelessness continue to be a serious problem for many individuals and families living in Arcata, and no one should have to worry about whether they will have food on their plate or a roof over their head. And whereas the California Center for Rural Policy reported in their Humboldt County Food Assessment that hunger is a daily experience and that more than 31% of adults experience food insecurity, while 37% of households with children experience food insecurity. Most live on fixed incomes or survive paycheck to paycheck. And whereas homelessness creates barriers to accessing essential services such as affordable health care, housing, childcare, and education, the costs of these necessities often contribute to hunger, food insecurity, and people experiencing homelessness on any given night. Whereas the aim of the National Coalition for the Homeless is to eradicate homelessness by solving the root causes of it, to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, including the storage of affordable housing for low-income residents, and to encourage support for the organizations committed to sheltering, providing support services, as well as meals, food supply, clothing, and hygiene products to the homeless and hungry. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata, that November 11th through 18th, 2023, is Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, and encourages all people in the community to work together to find meaningful solutions for these problems. Thank you.
My name is Winchell Dillonbeck. I am a McKinleyville resident, an Affordable Homeless Housing Alternatives AHA Advisory Council Member, a member of Health Care for All, and a member of the Alliance for Retired Americans, all of which are impacted by homelessness and hunger. I thank the Arcata City Council for recognizing National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. While progress has been made on dealing with the homeless population, the issue is ongoing without any real permanent solution. It is the toughest and probably the most challenging issue for the city. I urge you to continue to support safe parking programs, the establishment of sanctioned legal camps and tiny house villages where the unhoused would be safe and have a legal, safe place to secure their property, have decent meals, proper sanitation, and hygiene facilities, as well as access to community services. And I support any other services that provide housing, food, and mental health. I thank you for your efforts, for what you have done, and as I've said, this is going to be an issue that's just going to be with us. So I know the statement said "permanent solutions," but there aren't any permanent solutions, and I think that you should continue to support all organizations that are working on this issue because it truly is, it's truly a community issue. So, thank you.
Our next proclamation this evening is a proclamation designated November 25th through December 31st, 2023, as "The Season of Wonder and Light in Arcata." And Councilmember Atkins Salazar will read this proclamation.
Whereas the Arcata Chamber of Commerce and local businesses are coming together for the annual celebration of the holiday season, "The Season of Wonder and Light" in the heart of Arcata. Everyone is invited to enjoy holiday sights, sounds, and cheer throughout the month. And whereas the Arcata Chamber of Commerce will host a Small Business Saturday event on Saturday, November 25th, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., and shall include local business gift previews and promotions, a special edition farmer's market, and other holiday cheer surprises. And whereas on Friday, December 10th, Santa and Friends will visit Arcata along with music and dance for Arts Arcata to bring cheer to the children and families all across town, and local residents are encouraged to help make Arcata sparkle with a celebration of lights starting in the evening. And whereas on Thursday, December 7th, the Arcata Chamber of Commerce will partner with Chabad of Humboldt to light a public menorah on the Arcata Plaza to retain continuously lightage for Hanukkah, December 7th through December 15th. And whereas on Friday and Saturday, December 5th and 16th, the Arcata Chamber will host last-minute shopping throughout all of Arcata to promote and encourage one last show of support to local businesses. And whereas the Arcata Chamber of Commerce encourages residents and visitors to patronize the local businesses, support this community event series, enjoy the beautiful array of lights on the historic Arcata Plaza throughout the season to soak up Arcata's friendly, small-town holiday atmosphere, and to choose Humboldt by trying local stores first, in person and online, when it comes to their holiday shopping. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Arcata that November 25th through December 31st, 2023, is "The Season of Wonder and Light in Arcata." The Council also wishes to recognize the Arcata Chamber of Commerce for its constant efforts to promote and enhance Arcata's identity, economy, and cultural spirit. And it's signed by our mayor, Sarah Schaefer. And we have Bob Judewine, who's the vice chair for the Arcata Chamber of Commerce, here to accept. So thank you.
Madam Mayor, distinguished council members, on behalf of the -- Madam Mayor, distinguished council members, on behalf of the Arcata Chamber of Commerce and the Board of Directors, we wish to thank you for your attention to this matter, for your attention to the small businesses here in Arcata, and feel that a little wonder and light is a good thing for the City of Arcata. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Arcata Chamber of Commerce. Our final proclamation this evening, we will be mailing it to them. It is a proclamation in recognition of National Hospice and Palliative Care Month, and there is nobody here to accept that tonight, but we will be getting that proclamation to them. So thank you, Hospice of Humboldt, for all that you do. Okay, our next item this evening is a report from the Transactions and Use Tax Oversight Committee, and we have the Chair of the Committee, Jeffrey Knapp, here to present.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to explain more about what our committee is doing. I am the Chair of the Transactions and Use Tax Oversight Committee, or TO-Talk, as we call it, and we appreciate the opportunity to address the council. I'd like to start with a summary of why our committee was created, in case any current council members are not acquainted with its history. In 2008, the Arcata Police Department had seven empty full-time officer positions, primarily due to inadequate funding for those positions. In addition, also from a lack of funding, Arcata was unable to consistently maintain the condition and function of many streets and sidewalks. To address these problems, a citizens group was organized to create a ballot measure, Measure G, for a 3/4% transactions and use tax, along with a citizen-staffed oversight committee. Revenue from this tax would be earmarked to correct these problems. However, because an earmarked tax might not get the required 2/3 majority vote, a compromise was reached to have the proposed tax be a 3/4% general revenue tax, a tax not requiring 2/3 voter majority. The Measure G that passed also required creating our TO-Talk Oversight Committee, staffed by seven citizen volunteers, to see city budgets adequately funded infrastructure improvements, such as streets and sidewalks, and public safety needs, including police. Our committee's members are appointed by the council. We meet every six months, and we serve on staggered four-year terms. As to police staffing, in our past meetings with the police chief, he described an extremely competitive statewide demand for trained law enforcement personnel. As of November 7th of this year, with the help of one-time signing bonuses, the police department has filled four sworn officer positions and has one officer in background checking. The department also has one nonlateral office in the process of completing training, three cadets in the current police academy who graduated in December, and one potential cadet in background checking for the January police academy. In all, the department is currently staffed with 23 sworn officers and three police officer tranes, who are academy students. When fully staffed, the department has 27 foreign officers, including the police chief, a position that is actually currently vacant. Because police department hiring has been so difficult, it takes many months and is critical to maintaining staffing levels, the city manager has temporarily approved over-hiring two positions to maintain full or near-full staffing levels in the department. This shows the importance of the revenue generated by the transactions and use tax. Without the revenue from the Measure G tax for full staffing, the police department could only provide core services with reduced response time, services such as responding to threats to public safety like an earthquake, response to calls for service, criminal investigations, and traffic enforcement. There would also be response delays for other officer-initiated activity for crime and quality-of-life violations, such as car burglaries, vandalism, street narcotics dealers, encampment dwellers, and other less serious violations of the law. Therefore, our committee encourages the council to budget for maintaining adequate staffing levels in the police department. As to streets and sidewalks, Measure G revenue is equally important for the engineering department doing street improvements and maintenance, which substantially improved when Measure G tax revenue was added to their budget. As to overall Measure G tax revenue, we encourage the council to continue making decisions regarding other general fund expenditures as if the transactions and use tax did not exist, and instead focus revenue from this tax on public safety and street infrastructure services. Should revenue projections for this tax exceed the current budget, we recommend the council first focus on funding police services at the level needed to fill all officer and staff positions, and then align the remaining funds with the 2/3 public safety and 1/3 streets targets before using the additional funds for other general fund purposes. Thank you for your time, and I'll try to answer questions you have about our committee.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. Yeah, I'll open up. Does anybody have any questions? You guys did in our packet. We had a very comprehensive report, so I thank you for that, looking both at the police department and the engineering department, some great pictures of all the paving projects and everything going on. So I don't have any questions, because it was quite a thorough report. Anybody else?
Just thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next item, this takes us to early oral communication. The city values your comments, and this is a 15-minute time period for people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. So please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, we cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda, and at the end of oral communications, council can respond to statements. Speakers will be limited to two minutes, and there will also be time for comment on specific agenda items. So if you are here to comment on the ceasefire resolution or the general plan, which are two rather broad topics, please hold your comments until that time. All right, so if you are here to make comment on an item not on the agenda, please make your way to the podium. You will have two minutes. We'll start with in-person, and then go to Zoom.
Hi, I'm shaking a little bit. I'm Geraldine Rubin. I'm asking you to make a proclamation against antisemitism in our community. I've lived here since 1983. I've never experienced or heard from Jewish friends as much concern for our safety. I think that's the job of the city council, is to make a public statement, as Ashlyn did and Medford did this week, and you can see what they did. I'd like to give you some examples. There's been a march in the plaza at noon that has intimidated some of our Jewish residents. One of them is here tonight. She told me I felt traumatized. Her hands were shaking because the people in the march, it was considered Free Palestine, but they're very intense people coming up against Jewish people and approaching them, and she did not shop, and she went to Safeway instead of the farmer's market. Another woman also left. She said that a poster was put in her face, they forced it, she backed up, and they pursued hers. This is the march at noon in the plaza. Another woman just left. The Dia de los Muertos was the same time, and that was disrupted by the marchers in the plaza. But it wasn't just individual feelings about what's happening in Gaza and Israel, it was actually singling out Jewish women and putting stuff in their face. There also has been, we've had this before, leaflets in people's driveway by the Goi Im Defense League saying awful things. There's been graffiti on the Chabad Sukkot on the campus, there was denigrating, and then also two things happened at Cal Poly, our university. One is a professor who gave extra credit to students to attend the march and the rally. They got extra credit for the class. And somebody else got ahold of 6,500 emails of students, and every student received two pages of anti-Israeli Hamas literature. So in any case, the Jewish residents of Humboldt are feeling unsafe. Please do something.
Thank you, Jerry. Our next speaker, please.
Persons, and I want to thank the council for everything that you're doing on behalf of unhoused people. I want you to know that every little thing matters. And I want to thank the council, in particular Alex Stillman, who frequents the library often. I would love to see the rest of you frequent the library often. And with her support, we were able to get more laundry cards via Remy at Arcata House Partnership. Why is this so important? Because it's hard for me to hold on to staff at the library because of the smell. And when there are laundry cards, I can with dignity go up to a person and quietly slip them a laundry card and say, "Please come back after you clean your clothes." Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. And I will ask folks, and just remind that to please hold applause or cheers or jeers between commenters, it does make some people less inclined to want to comment or not feel safe in the space, so please hold your applause and cheering. Thank you.
My name is Tara Drobnik, and I've been a resident of Arcata for several decades, and I'm deaf. I have tried participating in these meetings via Zoom, which claims to have closed captionings. I've tried to participate in them via the live cast, which claims to have subtitles and closed captioning, and none of those technologies have ever worked. I've tried following up with reading transcripts after the fact, which does not allow me any capacity to engage in direct action at the time or in a position to enact any kind of change. It's really important for the city to provide access to all of its constituents to be able to meet not just their needs individually, but speak to the populations. And so that's deaf with a little d, deaf with a large d, hard of hearing, anybody that relies on speech readings, such as myself, I don't sign, but if I come and I'm watching you, and you're in front of your microphone, I can't read your lips, and then I'm looking at my daughter or my friends and trying to catch up, catching maybe three out of every 10 words. So I would encourage the city to look into strengthening their communication technologies to ensure that those closed captioning, open captioning, or subtitle services are actually working for council meetings. And thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name's Joanne McGary, and as many of the council members and staff know, I'm a regular participant here at the city council meetings, and I often bring up my own special THC/CBD concepts that today I just sort of feel, especially with a lot of issues that we are dealing with in our community tonight and beyond. So a reminder for people who are curious about my THC, it's transparency, truth, and trust. H stands for honesty, human-ness, and humility, and the C stands for caring, compassion, and connectedness. And very important tonight, I think, the CBD of caring, I mean courage, bravery, and decisiveness is very important in our community and with our leaders. And when it comes to the ceremonial matter and the proclamation on hunger and homelessness, I would like to reiterate what came up at the last city council meeting, and the great need, I think, in our community of Arcata, that we put together a task force so that we can really get a handle, especially as the winter weather comes in, get a handle on how we can best collectively, with a lot of people working and agencies working together, to create a better existence for the vulnerable and the unhoused people in our community. So a task force, I would like for that to be strongly considered, and I'd be most willing to serve on such. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name is Sean. Pleasure to be here with you guys, and I just wanted to say a few words about, you know, some other folks have talked about the issue of Jewish folks not feeling safe in this community. This is actually really important for you guys to take seriously, that we can bridge the gap. I mean, you know, there's so many reasons for why we need to take this seriously. I think one is that the 1% want us to be divided. They want the 99% of us to be divided amongst ourselves so that we're not effective. And, you know, it's important that it's not Jewish versus the Palestinians, all right? That's not the divide. The issue is pro-Palestinian human rights versus Zionists. That's the distinction that's really important here, because there's a lot of Jewish folks that are anti-Zionist. That really is a big thing, and it has a long history, even from before the Balfour Declaration in 1917. It was, I'm sorry, 18. It was a thing, all right, that the Jewish community, they did not want a state of Israel. They thought it would end in disaster. The rabbis, they all consensed on this. This has a long history. So there's even discrimination in the local government, in the county, Jewish people have been discriminated against. This is important. We need to take these things seriously. Anglos in our society do discriminate against Jewish folks, but it's a shame that local Zionists don't recognize that pro-Palestinian human rights advocates are their best friends, especially when there's a rise of fascism in this country.
Okay, we will take our last speaker here in person. We'll take no more in-person speakers, and then we do have some folks online, and then we will close this public comment period.
I have a question. Two empty seats. Is there some council members not here tonight?
Yes, we announced that at the beginning of the meeting. One is attending remotely, one is ill.
Yeah, I apologize.
Please go ahead with your comment.
I came late. My name's Robin. I live in Fortuna, and I have to leave early to catch the last bus. But I want to just relay experiences I had in Humboldt County when the Occupy movement was happening over at the courthouse in Eureka. There were citizens of the Eureka who complained that access to the courthouse was restricted because of the people in the Occupy movement. Strangely enough, day-to-day activities of the courthouse kept going on, but the complaint was raised. And so people have different levels of interior processing of feelings, and when somebody says that they're fearing, that Jews in Arcata are fearing for their safety, I'm concerned. I don't know if the concern has been raised before, but it was raised today when there's going to be a declaration of some kind of support by the City of Arcata for a ceasefire in Palestine. I do think the real, ongoing, present violence against Palestinians in Gaza and the West Bank should be more of a weight on our ethical and moral considerations than the subjective fear of anybody. One is real, the other is subjective. Thank you.
All right, we will take those two online comments, and then we will end early oral communications.
All right, our first online comment is Jim. Go ahead, Jim.
I actually had my hand up earlier because we weren't able to get early video, and I do apologize, and I will -- do apologize, and I will yield to the next person. Thanks.
All right, our next person is call-in user. Go ahead, call-in user. Can you unmute? All right, we'll give it one more try. Call-in user number one, can you unmute? All right, I think we have no more online public comment.
I did see somebody come up, so we'll take the, the last in-person comment. We do have time for one more comment, so we'll take that comment, and then we'll move to the consent calendar.
Thank you so much. Got a new microphone, I see. All right. Do I have to? It's working already? Okay. Thank you. Cool. I'm actually hoping to speak on behalf of a Jewish friend of mine. My name is Leonard. They go by Crane, but they just wrote a statement. They're having some trouble getting on the online platform. "I'm willing to voice my unequivocal, unequivocal solidarity with our community members organizing to pass this vital resolution of support for Palestine."
We will have time to, for that, there's an agenda item, so yeah. Well, if it's about the resolution, we'll, we'll come to that.
Okay, my apologies.
When we're there.
Okay.
Yeah, no worries. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so with that, we will close early oral communications for items not on the agenda, and that'll move us to the consent calendar. So all matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of these items, and if discussion is required, the item will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. So item A is to approve the minutes of the city council meeting of October 24th, 2023. Item B, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of November 1st, 2023. C, bi-weekly report on dispersments. Item D, approve a memorandum of understanding between Playhouse Arts and the city of Arcata to continue partnership conducting Valley West community engagement and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. Item E, adopt resolution number 234-19, accepting a conservation easement on a portion of Assessor's parcel number 500-011-007 adjacent to the Arcata Community Forest. Item F, adopt resolution number 234-20, a resolution of the city council of the city of Arcata, authorizing submission of individual grant applications for all CalRecycle grant programs for which the city of Arcata is eligible, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. And NMG, approve the purchase of a Prius Prime $37,538.76, including tax, and award a purchase contract to Mid-City Motor World to approve the purchase of one Ford F-350, $80,052.32, including tax and freight, and award the purchase contract to Harper Motors, approve the purchase of one Heister forklift, $41,205.60, including tax and freight, and award the purchase contract to materials and handling, and authorize the city manager to execute applicable documents. Do we have any council members that would like to remove an item from consent?
I would like to remove item D just for a separate vote.
Okay, great. All right. Any other items from, from staff or council? And is there any public comment or items to be removed by the public? Please come to the podium. Yeah.
I wasn't clear if the vice mayor, Matthew, said.
D, as in David?
Yes. D as in David.
I too would like that.
Okay, great. So we will have a separate comment on item D. Do I have a motion for A, B, C, E, F, and G?
I will make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three ayes in person. And on Zoom?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries unanimously, and now we will move to discuss item D. I believe, yeah, council member White had a statement on that.
No, she will be recusing herself, so I'm just going to recuse her on Zoom.
Yeah, I don't have any comments on it. I just wanted to pull it so we could vote on it separately, since council member White had to recuse herself.
Yep, go ahead.
And yes, if we do have public comment on this item, to the podium.
In my effort for transparency and understanding about a lot of these upcoming memorandums of understanding that involve also a financial component, I just needed some clarity about this particular MOU in terms of its relationship to KUNA as being a project of a fiscal sponsor, which is Playhouse Arts, or is this a memorandum of understanding for Playhouse Arts in addition to a KUNA operation, especially with, there's, I think, a $71,000 attachment of money to this? So I'm trying to just get clarity, because Cooperation Humboldt used to be the overarching organization for KUNA, and then when that kind of fell apart, KUNA became part of Playhouse Arts. So when we're talking about a memorandum of understanding, I want to know, is it the fiscal sponsor, but it's primarily KUNA's operation project? Or is it Playhouse Arts overall? So I just needed a little bit of clarification on this memorandum of understanding.
Thank you. City manager, would you like to briefly just kind of address that structure for the public?
Yeah, so the speaker is correct. KUNA used to be a, had a fiscal sponsor under Cooperation Humboldt, and when that organization, I mean, at least somewhat dissolved, I think they might still be doing a few activities, but they found another fiscal, a new fiscal sponsor in Playhouse Arts. The entire MOU and scope of work before you tonight is specific to KUNA, but their fiscal sponsor, who we do need to cut the MOU with and who we do all the auditing and payments through, is Playhouse Arts. But the entire scope is for KUNA in what is before you tonight.
Thank you. All right, and I see a great thumbs up. All right, any further questions or comments from council, or I will take a motion on item D?
I'll make a motion to approve item D of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, three affirmative and one recusal. All right, that takes us now into new business. Our first item under new business this evening is to appoint a new member to the Transportation Safety Committee for a term expiring in March 31st, 2026. So do we have any questions or comments from the council or an appointment that we would like to make?
I would thank Nia for coming forward and wanting to be a member of the Transportation Safety Committee. We really appreciate the answers to your questions. I think that you would make a great addition. It's really wonderful to serve on the committee, the committees. There's lots of other openings, as we said earlier. So with that, I would like to appoint Nia Tikku to the Transportation Safety Committee for a term expiring March 31st, 2026.
And I will second that. Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And on Zoom? Do we have a vote on Zoom?
We're getting there.
Okay.
I'm.
This is a vote on the potential member of Nia for our Transportation Safety Committee. You're an aye?
Yes.
All right, yes. Okay, motion carries affirmative for. Unanimous, that's the word. All right, that takes us into our next new business item, Consider Resolution Number 234-21, calling for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza. So do we have an introduction from our city manager, Karen Deemer?
Sure. Thank you, mayor and council members of the community. The resolution before you this evening was developed by a group of local residents seeking to find collective language to express what I'll describe as sort of the revulsion felt by members of the community over the killing of innocent civilians resulting from the Hamas-Israeli war in Gaza. The group got together after the last council meeting, sort of at, in part because some of the comments that were made by council members around trying to find collective language within our community that would be supported. The group sought to bring forth statements that would be commonly supported, recognizing that this would not reflect all views, but those of many backgrounds in our community, including those who identify as Palestinian, Jewish, Israeli, Muslim, Arab, and more. That language was submitted to the council, and I believe was in part the reason that it made the agenda for discussion here this evening. I do want to share that after the agenda was released, there were just further discussions that continued in the community and with individual groups in the community representing various viewpoints on this topic. And I know that the city council received email communications and phone calls suggesting both modifications to the original proposed language, as well as actual new resolutions, which we'll just let the public share tonight. I just wanted to remind, you do have four of you here this evening. The passage of a resolution will still require three affirmative yes votes to pass this evening, and with that, I will turn it back to the council.
All right, I know we have a lot of folks waiting to comment, so before we really open up for any discussion or statements from the council, I'd like to open it up for public comment. So again, please, I do really want to remind folks, due to the safety of our community and folks that would like to make comments and exercise their First Amendment rights, that we give folks the space to take that podium and make their comments free of cheers and jeers and applause, you know, between comments, because that can as well intimidate some people to, to make the decision to comment if they feel that they're not going to be supported or booed for what they have to say. So please, I do really ask the public that you respect that space, you respect the podium, and that you let people make their comments, and please reserve applause till the end. All right, we will open it up for public comment, so please come up to the podium. You will have three minutes. This is an agenda item, and go ahead.
By the way, my name is Carly Rojas. Honorable council members, I present an alternative resolution with my comrades to resolution 23421, with an understanding that this resolution that we will present, which is currently a blue file item, a blue folder item, can set precedent for impactful change that the city can make for the liberation of Palestine. The blue folder item is titled Resolution by the City of Arcata Calling for the Liberation of Palestine, whereas the City of Arcata condemns the ethnic cleansing, including the genocide of the Palestinian people in Gaza and the West Bank and throughout historic Palestine at the hands of Israeli settler state, whereas the ethnic cleansing refers to the creation of an ethnically homogeneous geographic area through the elimination of unwanted ethnic groups by deportation, forcible displacement, or genocide. And whereas the settler state of Israel is now engaged in an ethnic cleansing campaign, which includes genocide by explicitly requiring 2 million Palestinians to leave Gaza immediately through specific routes of displacement while being bombed and shot at throughout Gaza, including along the routes of displacement by the Israeli army. And whereas the settler state of Israel has committed multitudinous war crimes against the Palestinian people, including collective punishment according to international law. And whereas collective punishment is considered a war crime under international law and refers to, quote, "a form of sanction imposed on persons or a group of persons in response to a crime committed by one of them or a member of the group," end quote, and that the settler state of Israel commits collective punishment in their own frame of criminalization of resistance to the imposed settler state. And whereas in violation of the Fourth Geneva Convention of 1949, Article 3.1, persons taking no active part in the hostilities, including members of armed forces who have laid down their arms and have placed, or is the combat by sickness, wounds, detention, and/or other cause, shall in all circumstances be treated humanely without any adverse distinction founded on race, color, religion, or faith, sex, birth, or wealth, or any other similar criteria. The state of Israel has collectively displaced and punished the people of Palestine and destroyed universities, churches, hospitals, schools, refugee camps, and non-governmental organizations, centers. Whereas, we mourn all of the lives lost from October 7th to the present, where the genocide being committed by the settler state of Israel has included the indiscriminate killing of over 11,000 people, over 4,500 of them children, and the displacement of over a million Palestinian residents of Gaza, while also holding grief to those lost throughout the decades of genocide, displacement, occupation, oppression, and blockade endured in Gaza and the West Bank by Palestinian people. Whereas, the quantity of martyred, injured, and displaced Palestinians in the most recent escalation of genocidal violence committed by the settler state of Israel will increase without an immediate ceasefire, while underscoring that Palestinian lives must not be reduced to numbers. And.
Thank you for holding your applause. I appreciate it. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Jamila. I am a social work student at Cal Poly. I've been a resident of Arcata for 15 years. I'm Palestinian. My family is in Gaza, suffering a genocide. So I will continue and finish this resolution. Whereas, the quantity of martyred, injured, and displaced Palestinians in the most recent escalation of genocidal violence committed by the settler state of Israel will increase without an immediate ceasefire, while underscoring that Palestinian lives must not be reduced to numbers. And whereas the settler state of Israel has violated international law, having detained more than 1,450 Palestinian residents of the West Bank since October 7th, while 4,500 workers from Gaza are unaccounted for and are believed to have been detained by Israeli forces. The violation of international law includes acts of vengeance, as well as disallowing food, water, and visitations to Palestinians that have been illegally detained. Whereas, Israel has occupied Palestine and created internal refugees since 1948 Nakba, which was not a closed historical event, but continuous violence aimed at the destruction of Palestine and Palestinians, and has forced Palestinians to live under an apartheid state parallel to Jim Crow in the United States and apartheid in South Africa. Whereas, a concentration camp is defined as a place where large numbers of people, especially political prisoners or members of persecuted minorities, are deliberately imprisoned in a relatively small area with inadequate facilities, sometimes to provide forced labor or to await mass execution. And whereas the Gaza Strip, one of the most densely populated places on earth with more than 2 million people confined to 140.9 square miles, is a concentration cap and has been repeatedly referred to by human rights groups as the world's largest open-air prison, even prior to the particular ethnic cleansing campaign. And whereas Gaza is known as the world's largest open-air prison due to ongoing unbearable living conditions imposed by the state of Israel, including a full air, land, and sea blockade, enclosure of its, of oil borders by concrete walls and barbed wire fences, and the strict prohibition of Palestinians from leaving and entering the territory freely. And whereas the 2 million Palestinians in Gaza are without access to clean water, food, medical care, electricity, and humanitarian aid, according to the United Nations. And as of November 10th, at least 12 people have died of dehydration and starvation since October 7th. And whereas, the colonial carceral logics and justifications, including the positioning of indigeneity as criminal from which the colonial entity must protect itself, this is done through stripping the indigenous of their rights and denying them control of their own destiny, has been systematically applied to the project of the Israeli settler state and the occupation of Palestine, including the siege on Gaza. And whereas these colonial carceral logics are rejected through an abolitionist framework, Palestinian people are sovereign indigenous people.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, council. My name is Chelsea. I'm also a grad student at Cal Poly Humboldt, and I'm just going to continue reading the resolution. And whereas the state of Israel would be hindered in maintaining an apartheid regime with the removal of military and fiscal aid provided by the United States through the taxpayer funds annually, which continues to deprive Americans of money for their own urgent needs, and whereas the international community, including the majority of the United States residents, demand a ceasefire immediately, demonstrations across the globe will continue until the apartheid colonial state of Israel stops bombing, massacring, enacting military actions against and forcefully displacing Palestinians. Therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Arcata calls on the U.S. government to demand the immediate ceasefire by the settler colonial state of Israel and its accomplices, including the United States of America, and allow the safe passages of substantial humanitarian aid to Gaza, to hold Israel accountable for their indiscriminate violence against Israeli and Palestinian hostages, including the illegal detention of 1,450 Palestinian residents and disappearance of Palestinian residents of the West Bank by the Israeli occupation forces, to immediately and permanently seize fiscal and military aid, including arms, to Israel, including the annual $3.4 billion in the U.S. taxpayer funds sent by the United States to Israel, and the $14.3 billion aid package proposed by President Biden, and to support the liberation of Palestine, including an end to the Israeli apartheid state and occupation of Palestinian lands and the return to ancestral, the return of ancestral Palestinian lands to distinct sovereign communities and their descendant contiguous with the lands held prior to the Nakba. The unsettling of the apartheid state will support the human rights of all people, particularly the most oppressed and marginalized people in the region, the Palestinian people.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Sungita, and I'm an Arcata community member and Cal Poly Humboldt graduate student and employee. I'm fortunate to be part of Cal Poly Humboldt's Environment and Community Graduate Program, which takes a de-colonial approach to environmental justice issues. It is this same de-colonial approach that I bring before this council tonight, as I urge you to support the resolution by the city of Arcata, calling for urge you to support the resolution by the City of Arcata, calling for the liberation of Palestine, which is a blue folder item for tonight's meeting. This resolution is drafted by Humboldt for Palestine, a multi-ethnic collaboration comprised of students, faculty, and alumni from the Cal Poly Humboldt community, as well as Humboldt community members standing for the total liberation of Palestine and an end to Israeli occupation and apartheid. We've come together to demand our government cease military funding to Israel and the fueling of Israeli military's brutal violence and genocide of the Palestinian people with U.S. tax dollars. I'm a student of environmental justice, so I thought I'd talk to this council tonight about how the genocide in Palestine is an environmental justice issue, or an ecocide, as Cal Poly Humboldt's very own Dr. Kaitlin Reed terms this sort of destruction. During the Nakba of 1948, Zionist military forces destroyed over 500 Palestinian villages and towns, separating indigenous Palestinian people from their natural resources and spiritual and cultural connection to the land. Today, while climate change will have significant impacts on the region, the UN Developmental Program considers the Israeli military occupation as an environmental risk in its own right. Israel also controls the vast majority of the water supply for the West Bank and Gaza, using these water resources to provide unlimited water to Israel and its illegal settlements, while Palestinian people suffer severe water shortages. Before October 7th, 2023, 97% of the water in Gaza was undrinkable. Right now, cities across America are passing similar resolutions condemning Israel's settler colonial occupation of Gaza. I urge this council to follow in the courageous leadership of cities like Richmond, California, and Providence, to call for an end to this genocide and ecocide by passing the resolution calling for the liberation of Palestine tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Jade. I'm a student majoring in multicultural queer studies, and I'd like to use this time to remind people that the Palestinian genocide that is currently taking place is a queer struggle, and also recognize that this is Transgender Awareness Week. All systems of oppression reinforce one another. None can be fought in isolation. One cannot advocate for queer and trans people in the United States while supporting Israel's daily aggression against queer and trans Palestinians, whose oppression is compounded by multiple marginalized identities. Oppression becomes compounded because state violence, including militarism, occupation, the proliferation of prisons, and economic neo-colonialism is both gendered and racialized. In cases of settler colonialism, such as Palestine and Turtle Island, what is now present North America, indigenous women, queer, trans, and gender nonconforming folks, and especially those at the intersection of those identities, bear the brunt of the nexus of these systems of oppression. It is impossible to seriously address sexual and intimate partner violence within communities of color without addressing the larger structures. As Israel tarnishes its international image with continued and systemic violence against the Palestinian people, Israel is working hard to do PR damage control. Brand Israel, a campaign led by Israel Foreign Ministry, Prime Minister, and Finance Ministry, in constitution with U.S. marketing experts, aims to rebrand Israel as progressive and modern instead of militaristic, and based on a system of ethno-religious supremacy. Pinkwashing is a component of Brand Israel. Pinkwashing refers to Israel's campaign to distract from its egregious violations of international law and the human, civil, and political rights of Palestinians by shining a bright light on the supposed cultural liberalism and its supposed fun, fabulous, and gay-friendly culture. Pinkwashing juxtaposes a falsely progressive image of Israel with a racist portrayal of Palestinian, Arab, and Muslim societies as backwards, repressive, and intolerant. This uses racist, orientalist portrayals to justify Western colonization as a way of saving and freeing the colonized, who are too uncivilized to rule themselves. Another example of Israel's touting of longstanding policy of accepting openly gay and lesbian soldiers in its army. Of course, Israel fails to mention that those soldiers are still part of an illegal occupying army, and that a bullet fired by a lesbian is just as lethal as one fired by a straight man, and a bomb dropped by a transgender pilot onto a building where Palestinian families are attempting to take shelter is just as likely to kill them as one dropped by a straight man.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Athena, and I'm a social work student at Cal Poly Humboldt. I come before you today because this is an issue that is a humanitarian issue. This is a genocide, and it is close to my heart. I feel like I just want to also address the room here. I've been receiving really charged...
You're just going to make sure all speakers have to... You can only address the council.
Oh, all right. Well then, it's been really charged in this room. I've been receiving looks from individuals that have made me feel unsafe. I know that earlier there was a talk about feeling unsafe from protesters. I also want to mention that I have been at these marches, and I have had Zionists screaming in my face about us being there, calling us rapists. What I wanted to talk about was the propaganda war, and I feel extremely charged right now, so I'm just going to start. On October 10th, members of the media were granted permission by the Israeli army to visit Kfar Asa and witness the aftermath of the Hamas attack. A reporter from the Israeli news outlet tweeted saying soldiers told them they believe 40 babies and children were killed. As the day progressed, the information morphed from at least 40 babies being killed to some being beheaded. On the day, the Israeli army could not confirm the beheadings. However, the very next day in London, people were subjected to this horrifying and unverified headline. On October 11th, many Western media outlets jumped on that claim, quoting the spokesman of Israel's prime minister, but many of those same media outlets were forced to walk back their reportings, issuing updates like this one. Israel cannot confirm the specific claim that babies were beheaded in Hamas's attack. Later that day, during an American press conference, Joe Biden claimed he had seen photographs of beheaded babies. The White House later retracted this statement and later published this correction. U.S. officials and the president have not seen pictures nor confirmed such reports independently, but the damage had already been done. Biden's initial claims were already featured on the front page of many news outlets. This proves that propaganda is effective, is effective, and I support the resolution that is seeking to be passed here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I don't wish to be here. I don't wish to have to say these words. Anti-Semitism is not a subjective thing. Of course, criticism of Israel is not inherently anti-Semitic. However, requiring Jewish people living outside of the land of Israel to make a public declaration about Israel is actually one of the definitions of anti-Semitism. The City of Arcata and those putting forward this proposal may not have intended this, but when we discuss impacts, when we discuss interactions with minority communities, we discuss impact over intention. The very act of bringing up this resolution in a forum that requires public input, let alone the language of this particular resolution, requires that we make a public declaration on this issue. It forces our hand because this is by definition a public comment process. It is therefore anti-Semitic in its impact. The fact that some Jewish people helped create or craft this resolution doesn't change that impact. We are a diverse group of people with diverse thoughts on Israel and Palestine. Jewish people are a vulnerable community. None of us should have to stand in a public forum to display whether or not we are the right kind of Jew, especially not in the current climate of rampant anti-Semitism. Even prior to this current eruption of violence, religious Jews in America have consistently been the number-one targeted group of religious hate crimes by an overwhelming percentage compared to other faith groups. In recent weeks, violence and hate have manifested all over our community, both against pro-Palestinian demonstrators and against Jewish institutions and individuals. Islamophobia and anti-Semitism are on the rise everywhere. One prominent local business has been discussed as a target for boycott because a Star of David-wearing employee there might be a Zionist. Nobody in our community should be wondering what the consequences will be for going to synagogue or mosque, wearing a yarmulke, a Star of David, a kaffiyah, a hijab, or a jallabiah in public. At the risk of sounding too mystical, I'd like to talk about the idea of holding space that comes from couples therapy. To those in this room that care about what is happening in Israel-Palestine, I'd like to suggest supporting your local Jewish-Israeli-Palestinian-Arab-And-Muslim communities, and that will help heal the intergenerational trauma that is at the root of so much of this conflict, a feeling that we are othered and alienated, dehumanized as political pawns. I believe that radiates back to our peoples and the messages that we send them about the possibility of coexistence and peace. Please don't bring the Israel-Palestine conflict to our community. Please don't feed another deepening of the polarization of American society. Please don't require that local Jewish community members have to come out in public to declare our opinion on Israel. Stop this entire process immediately.
Reminder, please hold your applause. You were doing so well. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm not really into public speaking. Can you hear me?
We'll give it a second to quiet down. Thank you. Please go ahead.
So, to the members of the City Council and also the residents, I feel like the current resolution for an immediate ceasefire in a distant but relevant conflict has put many of us in a challenging position. The call for peace is a noble endeavor, but it is important to recognize the complexity of a situation, as well as the potential consequences it may have on individuals within our community. I believe that the motion in its current form oversimplifies the situation and inadvertently does force members of the community to take a stand. The divisive rhetoric and expressions of hate that have emerged in response to the recent events and to this resolution make it clear that taking a public stance can expose people to unwarranted hostility, discrimination, and fosters an environment where people feel afraid to be in certain areas of this great city. I propose that we, as a community, come together to promote education and understanding. Let us foster an environment where dialogue is encouraged, where we can learn from one another, and where we can work towards a shared vision of peace and coexistence. Instead of rushing into immediate declarations and resolutions, we should encourage thoughtful dialogue and engage in more comprehensive understanding of the complexities at play. I urge you to consider the broader implications of the motion put forward. Let us ensure that our decisions promote inclusivity and respect for the diverse perspectives that make up this city.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Thank you. I just want to say, before getting into my friend's statement, how grateful I am for the democratic processes that allow us to be here and express our content or discontent with the direction that we are headed as a community, as a nation, as a planet. I feel like there is a lot of, as one of the first speakers put it, they're trying to divide us. They're doing everything in their power to tear us apart from each other, to set these risks in place in our families, between friends. I feel like there is so much misinformation on this topic. It would be hard for us in three minutes to get into it, but I encourage everybody, as I'm sure you are doing already, to do as much as you can in your own time to research the history of this and find the context for what is objective truth, objective reality. To get into my friend's statement now. I'm writing to voice my unequivocal solidarity with our community members organizing to pass this vital resolution of support for Palestine. We must stand against U.S.-funded Israeli acts of genocide against the Palestinian people. I am the descendant of two Ashkenazi Ukrainian Jewish refugees with over 100 direct relatives gassed at a Nazi camp in Bukhax. Our family unequivocally condemns the maintenance of the violent oppressive Israeli state. Standing against Israel is not anti-Semitism. Standing with Palestine does not equate to the hatred of Jews. I implore the City of Arcata to pass this important resolution in solidarity with Palestine. Thank you. And if I can continue on with the few minutes I have, I just want to say, in echoing that sentiment... Thank you. Thank you. It'll be quick. Just, the conflation of Zionism with Judaism could not be farther from the truth. I stand with my Jewish friends, my Jewish relatives, community members here today, who even stand on the side of Zionism. If I were to see any of them in the face of danger, I would stand up to protect them. I am here in honor of love, the unity that we all hope to achieve. I'm sorry. You can see me up there, y'all. But, oh, I'm sorry. I just want to say that and make sure that it's clear that there is no hatred here. On the other hand, I have faced, and I have video here, of a local realtor, Steve Sampson, who has pointed his finger at us like he was shooting us at the vigils. We're standing there peacefully, and he is... And I have it on video, saying that he wants to play cowboys and Arabs, and this is the sentiment of a lot of people in our community. When we're standing up peacefully for the protection of people in Palestine, there are people on all sides. We are all coming from vulnerable communities, and it's not just Jewish people who are under attack, but I stand up for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Rabbi Bob Rottenberg, one of the rabbis serving Temple Beth El in Eureka, proud resident of Arcata, member of the Humboldt Interfaith Council. Two weeks ago, I said that I didn't think a resolution was a good idea, especially the resolution that had been... was being proposed. And I said at that time that I would be happy to work with other people to come up with a resolution that was maybe a little bit more even-handed, that was a result of a collaborative effort, and that felt okay to me. So I did take part in working with six other people, representing many different sides in this issue, and we came up with the resolution that sits before you this evening. But my opinion on this entire issue has changed dramatically over the course of the last week, when I heard from members of our Jewish community that they've been verbally assaulted and felt to be very unsafe at the farmer's market, as we've been hearing from other speakers, and that now many of the people in the Jewish community have lost their sense of safety, a sense of safety that I would say we've always enjoyed here, up to now. This is the local disaster that we're facing here at home. If we're going to do anything in the way of a resolution, I would support a resolution calling for peace here in Arcata. And I would raise the question to all of us of what happens tomorrow? What happens on Friday? What happens a week from now after any of these resolutions are passed? Are these words that we're simply going to pass on to our representatives in Congress and nothing changes here on the ground? We need the safety to be able to be here, to feel safe in our community, all of us, and I would hope that we are able, as several other speakers have suggested, to work together to educate each other and to educate ourselves on how we can, in fact, be the peace that we want to be. I want to remind you that one of the great speakers of the House of Representatives used to say, "All politics is local. All politics is local." That's what we're talking about here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
My name is Rabbi Eliyahu Cowan, and I am of Benay Yisrael, the people of Israel. I'm named after my ancestor Jacob, known as Yisrael. At this moment in history, there are people and cultures that harbor very... At this moment in history, there are people and cultures that harbor very different attitudes about violence and the value of human life. There are people and cultures that rejoice, positively rejoice, dancing in the street, rejoicing over the massacre of innocent civilians. Conversely, there are people and cultures that seek to avoid killing innocent civilians and deeply regret it when they do, and they occasionally prosecute and imprison their own soldiers when they violate this modern norm of combat. There are people and cultures who revel in the anguish of hostages and prisoners of war, who will parade them before cheering mobs and often allow them to be assaulted or raped or even murdered. They will desecrate their bodies in public, and all of this carnage is a cause for jubilation. Conversely, there are people and cultures who find such barbarism revolting and, again, would be inclined to prosecute anyone on their own side who partook in it. Standing with Am Yisrael, the Jewish people, is not about politics or a real estate dispute. It's about standing for life, morality, and human decency. It's incumbent upon all people of moral virtue to stand for life. Anything short of a complete and unconditional surrender of Hamas, haters of life, is unacceptable. We yearn and we pray for the day, as our prophet Isaiah said, "La'isagoy al'gai cherev, la'yimdu oyid milchama," where one nation will not lift up arms against another nation and will learn of warfare no more. But in the meantime, we have to look at the situation as it stands today, and unless the citizens of Gaza have the will and ability to overthrow their tyrannical governance and change the culture into one that promotes life, Israel must do everything they can to help rid this evil from their midst while doing their best to minimize casualties to the righteous...
No, no, no. Let people speak. Give people their right to speak.
While doing their best to minimize casualties to righteous and innocent people living there. War is hell, definitely a last resort. We're all mourning and hurt and praying for goodness and godliness to prevail so the world can experience everlasting peace, tranquility, and prosperity. In times of trouble, it's our holy Torah, heartfelt prayers, and acts of goodness and kindness that fortify us and give us strength. "Osei shalom bim ramah, hu yaseh shalom alenu ve'al kolyisroh v'imru amen." May God grant us peace here in Arcata and across the globe. God bless the United States of America. God is watching over Israel from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. Am Yisrael Chai. The Jewish people are alive and here to stay.
Thank you. We will take the next commenter. Hold on one second. We'll wait until the comments stop so you can have your time at the podium, because everybody deserves their time to speak at the podium. So please, respect the podium. Thank you. Go ahead.
Shalom aleichem. My name is Jasmine. I'm a local Jewish resident and student. To those who still feel unsure about supporting Palestine publicly, I encourage you to listen to the voices that have been intentionally silenced and marginalized and to the people that have a centuries-long connection to their land. It is dangerous to conflate criticisms of Israel and Zionism with antisemitism. It is dangerous to rebrand antisemitism to benefit a nation's GDP and its perception internationally. Using antisemitism in this way takes away from the instances of actual antisemitism, like what happened in 2018 at the Tree of Life synagogue and what we have seen here in Arcata. Branding freedom for one people as the extermination of another is dangerous. The idea that freedom is limited, that freedom is complicated and impossible for more than one group to hold is dangerous. Freedom for one group does not have to come at the cost of another, and if it does, it is not true freedom. I am here speaking in support of the resolution for the liberation of Palestine because we need more than a ceasefire. We need to permanently end the United States funding of Israel. We need to stop supporting a nation-state that has ultimately failed at being a safe space for the people who reside within it and for the people that it claims to represent. Israel does not represent me. Israel does not represent all Jewish people. By definition, Israel's commitment to being a Jewish state necessitates codifying discrimination against Palestinian people as... discrimination against Palestinian citizens as non-Jews in its laws. Israeli nationality does not exist, but a Jewish nationality separate from citizenship does. This means that national citizens, Jews like myself, are afforded greater rights under the law than citizens only, like Palestinians, friends of mine, who face a regime of institutionalized discrimination embodied in more than 50 discriminatory laws. Israel's creation was rooted in white supremacy and the exploitation of Jewish labor to perpetuate settler colonialism. We need liberation for Palestinians in the West Bank, in Gaza, and across Israel. We need to call out the human rights violations that we are watching occur, the war crimes we see being committed, and the international laws we see being broken. We need to call out the genocide that we are all watching from... Sorry. That we are all watching from the other side of the world through our phone screens. By calling for liberation now, you are going to set a precedent to call for liberation and to uplift indigenous voices here. I support the continued efforts of Palestinians to liberate themselves and to be held as equals on the land they have cared for for thousands of years. I support the resolution put forward by Humboldt for Palestine, resolution for the liberation of Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'd like to add my voice to the growing number of voices calling for the city of Arcata to stand with Palestine and call for an end to the genocide in Gaza. This means calling for an immediate ceasefire, an end of US aid to Israel, and for desperately needed aid to be let into Palestine to provide relief amidst this humanitarian catastrophe. Show the rest of the county, state, country, and globe that Arcata is against ethnic cleansing. That was the generic statement that I wrote. I also want to add on a few other things. To the people that are still talking about freeing hostages, I just want to say, if you actually care about the hostages, then you should also care about a ceasefire, because you're never going to see those hostages again if you continue blowing up innocent civilians. Also, about the people who say that this was started by Hamas, first of all, it wasn't, and second of all, I want to remind everyone that the US was partly responsible for installing Hamas, and this kind of thing happens again and again and again. We install leaders in other countries and then we turn on them. This is by design. I... Also, I just want to say, yeah, antisemitism isn't cool, but you know what else isn't cool? Over 11,000 dead civilians, and that's what blows my mind, is that so many people can't wrap their head around the ceasefire resolution, which really is... Ceasefire is just, don't fucking kill people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Abby, and I'm a resident here in Arcata, and I'm here this evening in support of a ceasefire resolution and immediate de-escalation in Gaza, condemning the blatant genocide of the Palestinian people. I would like to start by thanking you for listening to us. By doing so, you set an example to all representatives of our democracy to not become complacent in their service. A call for ceasefire is not synonymous with antisemitic rhetoric, but an act of humanitarianism. The retaliation of Israel continues to be out of control, their actions constituting what we know to be obvious war crimes, including but not limited to collective punishment and the bombing of hospitals as well as places of worship. Over the past month, thanks to the technology I hold in my hand and you hold in yours, I've seen things that I can never unsee and have changed me on a fundamental level, and I know this to be true for many people in the room. To believe in the separation between yourselves and the people of Palestine is to believe that we ourselves are separate from one another. I dare you to look at the people in this room and say that. This is a city that supposedly prides itself on the values of inclusivity and community, but would you ask us to put a limit on those values, to decide who deserves our compassion and solidarity based solely on where they happen to be born? 11,000 and counting dead bodies is a difficult thing to comprehend. It's even harder to reconcile the fact that over 4,500 of those are children, children who should have never had to die as martyrs, who never should have had to die for something they didn't understand. It's less complicated to ignore all of it and to believe it has nothing to do with you, to do with us. The easy thing to do is look away. I believe there is only thing... only one thing more tragic than the loss of human life, and that's the loss of our collective humanity, and I'm asking you to hold on to yours.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate you taking the time to hear this out, and I just wanted to say that I actually don't support this resolution, but I recommend you pass it for your own sake, if you can stomach it, because otherwise you will face increased pressure from all sides. You might face that anyway, because it needs more than just symbolic measures. I do have some things about it that I like. It calls for a ceasefire. It recognizes the history of Palestinian subjugation. It calls for a return of hostages. But this is the point at which I would diverge, because it does not call for the return of hostages and prisoners held by Israel. And here is where it begins to show its bias. It talks about a Hamas terrorist attack, but doesn't use terrorists to refer to Israel. But terrorists, anyway, is not a legal concept for the International Criminal Court. This is actually a rhetorical device, and it's only used in one direction. It says no moral justification, but only for Hamas, who killed 1,400, it says. But it does not say no moral justification in condemning Israel, even though Israel killed over 10,000, almost 10... what, eight times the number, and somehow that's not carrying no moral justification. These are serious concerns, I think, for anyone who really, you know, does their history, studies their history and pays attention to these issues. It says that there is no moral justification, as I just said, but, you know, it's actually a very similar category than the slave revolts in this country. Gaza is, according to the United Nations, an occupied place, even though the military had withdrawn. Gaza is recognized by the United Nations as an occupied place because of all the constraints that they place, because of the restrictions on travel that they place. So it is actually very similar morally to our slave revolt, and history will judge it that way. And so it's important to keep in mind that we're at a moment right now where if it... the two-state solution is dead, and it's Israel's fault.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Olivia Fox. I'm an Arcata resident, student, and activist. I'm 26 years old, and I am part of the generation that is coming of age now. Along with my peers, I will be inheriting a world that is at a crossroads right now. I have marched in the streets of San Francisco with middle and high schoolers, screaming for ceasefire, screaming for humanitarian aid, describing how it's their cousins that are getting bombed in Gaza. I followed a four-year-old's call for free Palestine as she sat on her father's shoulders. My generation is awake. The youth is awake. We are seeing this genocide in real time. We have the internet connection and communication with the people in Gaza living through this. We hear them begging to be seen as humans, to put value on their lives, for us to do something. We are sharing in this collective trauma and wondering how people are numb and desensitized to the violence. We are wondering and watching our elected officials and how they respond, and our country is being watched by the world. If you've seen the United Nations resolution calling for ceasefire, you will have seen that 120 countries voted in favor of ceasefire and the delivery of humanitarian aid, and the United States is one of the 14 who voted no. Who the fuck... Sorry. Who on earth votes no on a ceasefire and delivery of humanitarian aid? I will reiterate that the national polls show that the majority of Americans want a ceasefire, Republicans and Democrats alike. The congressional staff answering our calls and seeing our petitions are walking out of their jobs to protest with us, as well as countless other government officials, academics, artists, and leaders. Our administration is not listening to us. Joe Biden is 82 years old. Nancy Pelosi is 83 years old. They are not inheriting the world that they are making. We are. Our officials say that there is no money for housing, for education, for healthcare, for public transportation, for green energy, for countless services that our community and neighbors need, but suddenly $14.3 billion are approved for Israel's military. Our tax dollars, as American citizens, provide an apartheid state with billions of dollars annually, and we must stop this. There is a shift happening, and you can't pretend you don't see it. My generation is sick of imperialism, of exploitation, of settler colonialism, and white supremacy. We are here. We are in the streets marching. We are in City Hall. We are demanding that you stay up and say enough. We will not rest until Palestine is free. In case this isn't clear, asking for the rights of one people is not asking for the removal of another's. Asking to end the occupation and racist apartheid in Palestine is not calling for the extermination of Jewish people. We are going to inherit the world you create. I support the resolution put forth by the Humboldt for Palestine, resolution of the liberation of Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Karpani. I live in Arcata. I'm retired. I'm also with the Spirit of Mandela Coalition. I'm here in support of the resolution that's calling for the freedom of Palestine. I have so much in my heart and in my head that speaking is almost impossible. I am thinking of what would it be like to be occupied with no freedoms and very little resources for 75 years? The United Nations says that we are obliged, if we are oppressed, if we are occupied, to fight back at any cost. We have that right and obligation. This genocide is the first time this country, really, has looked at it upfront and personal, on our phones, on the TV, every single day. Somebody's children being murdered, butchered, literally butchered. This genocide is not new, but it's new to us, because, of course, we weren't taught about the genocides of our indigenous brothers and sisters. That was kept from us, and we learned it and were upward, but that was so long ago. And being that they're still on reservations, very few of us are combined with them. We don't know much about them. Same with our Palestinian brothers and sisters. We don't know much about them until today, when we're scrambling to learn more and more because the information is so poor and so skewed as to make us think that our country is the best and not to see that our country, our leaders, are funding the butcher of people just like us. They came for them in the morning, and in the evening, who's next? So I say, please, this is a pivotal moment. We're going to have to make these decisions, afraid or not. Afraid? Yeah, it's scary, but we all are going to have to step up and take a stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Sam Newworth. I've lived in Arcata for 40 years. I support the resolution. As the other gentleman said, I wish it went a little further. I speak as a Jewish member of the community. I was raised by Jewish parents whose first language was Yiddish, so I'm familiar with antisemitism. So I'm familiar with antisemitism. And I've been going to the rallies. If I were to observe anyone antagonizing or threatening people over their religion, I would stop them in those rallies. I didn't see any sentiments that were antisemitic. But I understand that it exists deep within people who've been traumatized. I would like to invite any community member who feels that way to come to our meetings, to come to our rallies, and air their issues and be welcomed. Because there is no intentional antisemitism there. Antisemitism is being conflated with an urgency for justice for the other side. But that's not to say we want to remove justice from the Jewish people or threaten the Jewish people. But the Jewish people have to preserve their safety by offering justice to the other side. The Jewish people will never be safe if they don't do that. And the policies in Israel now are making Judaism more threatened. It's making the state more unstable, more hated. So when people in the community come to you and say they feel unsafe, they feel like antisemitic attacks are happening, that's true, that's their experience. But that, we have a unique community. We're not a pretty, we're a pretty enlightened community. We have the lowest antisemitism of anywhere I've ever been. Not that we don't have it, but we have people that are triggered by any criticism, any feeling of disagreement with the myth of Israel. And it's a myth. It was founded on white supremacy. That's very threatening. That leaves you in a permanent state of insecurity. That fuels antisemitism. In order for antisemitism to be cured in our community, the people who are feeling it have to stand up and acknowledge it and come, and the other side has to come together and figure out what's going on there. But if I saw it going on in our meetings, I would immediately condemn it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, esteemed city council members. My name is Orin Nardi, and I'm a resident of Arcata. If this council decides to put forth a resolution concerning the Israeli-Palestine conflict, I wholeheartedly endorse one that champions unity and shared values, emphasizing the sanctity of human life and the urgent need to end violence, not only in this conflict, but also in the myriad of crises plaguing our world, from Ukraine to Sudan, Yemen, and Syria. In addressing this profound issue, it is imperative to approach it with the most adequate sense of empathy and a steadfast commitment to fostering unity within our community. Attempting to delve into the intricacies of the Israeli-Palestinian conflict within the resolution, especially in an imbalanced manner of any way, poses the risk of sowing division within our community, potentially overshadowing any positive outcomes. Instead, I earnestly implore this council to focus its resolutions on combating antisemitism and Islamophobia within our local community, creating an environment where individuals of Jewish, Israeli, Palestinian, Muslim, and every background feel not only safe, but generally supported within our community, shielded from the perils of harm and bigotry. Regurgibly, since the commencement of this conflict, our community has experienced a distressing surge in antisemitic sentiments directed toward Jews and Israeli-Americans. Many of us no longer feel secure to speak Hebrew in public or participate in public events due to the haunting fear of hate speech, which some members of our community have already experienced. This is a troubling reality, and this is exacerbated by the disheartening fact that Cal Poly Humboldt has transformed into a platform for some people to propagate inflammatory, inflammatory rhetoric, perpetrating rebrand and antisemitic sentiments against our local Jewish community. I know students at Cal Poly Humboldt who are Jewish and have faced online harassment and feel coerced to take positions on this conflict. The palpable threat of alienation and violence against a local community which seeks nothing more than peaceful existence is disconcerting. The rising tide of antisemitism in all of its grotesque forms serves an alarming indicator of a clear and present danger. I beseech this esteemed council to use its influential voice to assert that regardless of any event in the Middle East, the most impactful course of action is to embody love, empathy, and unwavering support for those directly affected by this ongoing conflict. Individuals of both sides of this dispute carry burdens of deep-seated intergenerational trauma, and ensuring that every member of our local community feels safe and secure is a pivotal step toward healing the roots of this trauma that underlie much of the conflict. Hate has no place here, and I believe it never will. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Elizabeth. I'm not a public speaker. I don't have a prepared speech. I'm really scared. But I'm just going to say what I have to say, which is I'm totally not supporting this resolution. It's dividing up people. It's like a football game with them against them. That's not where we want to go. Arcata's supposed to be for Arcata. Maybe we could do some kind of peace thing here for community Jewish and Palestinian people, of all people. Speaking as a Jewish person, when my daughter is chased out of her apartment by her landlady for wearing a Star of David, and the landlady is saying, are you one of those kind of Jews? And Zionists is tossed around in this room tonight as like a F-word? You don't get to tell me what's antisemitic if you're not Jewish. I feel it loud and clear. It's scary. It's terrible. We should work on mending our fences here at home in Arcata. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. My name is Julia Dunn. I'm an Arcata community member, and I'm here in support of a resolution for a ceasefire. I'm also here to ask, what good is your land acknowledgement? The City of Arcata Land Acknowledgement claims that it seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. I would like to bring up the lecture, What Good Is A Land Acknowledgement, available on the HSUN AS YouTube page, which underscores that a land acknowledgement is meaningless without action. Israel is a self-proclaimed settler colonial state, currently carrying out the very same project of genocide upon an indigenous population. Palestinians, as the Arcata City Council acknowledges as part of the city's history, as past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wia and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. Projects of settler colonialism and genocide do not happen in a silo and are not disconnected. The United States is directly complicit in funding the genocide, the apartheid, and the Holocaust of Palestinians, and the Israeli settler colonial state and their war crimes, including collective punishment. Current martyrs include at least 11,200-plus Palestinians, including 4,600 children, since the conflict began on October 7th. More than 70% of Gaza's 2.3 million residents are now displaced. Every constituency of the United States, including cities and municipalities, are complicit in this genocide. We must also be very clear in understanding decolonialism as a project rooted in the land return to sovereign indigenous communities. Decolonialism is not a replication of settler colonial systems. Indigenous people belong to place and land and have deep relationality, knowledge, systems, art, and spiritual practice rooted in place. Settler colonial projects, on the other hand, are projects that are rooted in white supremacy and the eraser of indigenous people from place in genocide. This then allows the project of nativism to claim belonging to a place based on myth of terra nullis, or empty wilderness, language used extensively in the United States colonial project. Land that has never been empty, but the home and place of belonging to indigenous peoples since time immemorial. The genocide of Palestinian people, a project that began 75 years ago with the Nakba, is not an anomaly. It is a systemic component, a requirement of settler colonial projects. The return land from the river to the sea in Palestine is not a call for genocide. It is a call for the return of land back into a balanced relationship under the sovereignty and care of Palestine for mutual well-being seven generations into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Hello. I'm Gary Blumfield, and I'd just like to, I'm sorry if this sounds disjointed. I'm not sure what I was going to say when I came up here, but a lot's been said. And for one thing, I'd like to just point out that there's been, you know, as was talked about before, Zionism is really just a return to the land of Israel by the Jewish people that were driven out millennia ago. And so, you know, talk of it being colonialism is a little scary. And, but anyhow, I really don't, and also saying that, basically saying that Israel doesn't have a right to zist is a very clear call for war, not peace. And I don't see how that can help the peace process. But, you know, and talking about a two-state solution is dead. In 1947, it was proposed to set it up that way. And, you know, and the start of Israel then was proposed to be just a couple little tiny bits of the land that the Jews then would have agreed to, but their population didn't. That was the first refusal to go along with that. And that was followed by an immediate war that Israel had to fight to get established, even though it was trying to get set up in a peaceful manner. And so, all that said, you know, there's so many complexities to this, that this resolution, even if it were to be cleaned up from its present form, which has some problems still, is not going to solve the problem. I think it's only going to make things more complicated in our own community. And I could go into details, but if there, I'd be willing to help, you know, with, you know, talk about some of my concerns with the verbiage in here with whoever, if there's a committee set up to want to try to come up with some other way to stop killing in a way that might work. So, thank you.
Thank you. We'll take the next speaker, please.
Hi. I'm Reverend Suzanne Kimmel, and I live in Arcata, and I work in Arcata as an interfaith community chaplain. I am active with Humboldt Interfaith Fellowship and the Spiritual Leaders Caucus of True North. I am very concerned about strengthening the resiliency of our community. And so, when the call for a resolution happened two weeks ago, I was very excited about volunteering to be one of the community members that participated with members of Humboldt for Palestine to work on this resolution that is actually on the agenda. Knowing that community building is not sexy, and it's not performative, and it's actually a grind and a lot of work and messy. And I have no attachment to passing resolutions. I am not convinced at the efficacy or the impact of resolutions on the rest of the world. But I am concerned about the impact on our community. And I am concerned about the opening up of increased attacks, Islamophobic and antisemitic attacks. I'm concerned about how language is used against community members. And I feel that really, politics is all local. And so, even though I actually was part of creating it, and we all got pushback from our constituents, I still feel like it was a very successful attempt because it was part of creating an avenue for building community and networking and actually listening and having conversation. And I encourage that we don't accept any resolution until there's actually more work in the community with how we relate with each other, how we listen to each other. And Humboldt Interfaith Fellowship is very willing and eager to be part of offering houses of worship as places for listening and dialogue and conversation, as well as some activities that we're going to plan at the farmer's market. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. We'll take our next commenter.
Hello, council members, and hello, Mayor Schaefer. My name is Johnny Glanert. I've been living here for seven years now. We are here to urge the city council to join cities like Richmond, California, and Providence, Rhode Island, in calling for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza and an end to the illegal occupation of Palestine. Arcata's voice is important and plays a role in influencing our state representatives, who can in turn vote on these matters at the federal level. We've been told by the council that both sides will be left unhappy regardless of the outcome of this resolution, and that Jews and non-Jews need to work together on this issue. We urge the council to recognize that many of us Arcadans who support a ceasefire in Gaza are in fact Jewish. There is no religious or ethnic barrier to opposing genocide, and to suggest that Jews are by default opposed to a ceasefire plays into the hateful scourge of antisemitism. The Jewish faith does not necessitate support for genocide. When I visited occupied Palestine in 2021, I witnessed the stark and brutal reality of Israeli apartheid. When I came home, my friends and family were shocked to learn that occupied Al-Quds had separate Arab and Israeli buses. There were separate schools, separate neighborhoods. There were even roads that our driver, Ziad, a Christian Palestinian man, was not allowed to drive on. Ziad informed us all that vehicles in occupied Palestine are required to display coded license plates, one for Palestinians, one for Israelis. Traveling with him throughout the occupied West Bank, we found that the land is fractured by hundreds of military checkpoints guarded by armed border police. Israelis and other foreigners like myself pass through these checkpoints undeterred, while Palestinians are detained, often for hours at a time, their phones confiscated by Israeli occupation soldiers. This constant, everyday surveillance is meant to dehumanize and demoralize indigenous Palestinians on their own land. The cruelty is the point. I don't know how anyone could experience that place and not see the long-term structural violence that the Israeli government inflicts upon its 7 million Palestinian residents every day. I saw the nine-meter concrete walls and barbed wire fences that contain Gaza and prevent Palestinians inside from leaving or entering freely. The Gaza Strip is a 25-mile concentration camp, where more than 2 million Palestinians are deprived of food, water, medicine, and electricity. Half of the people inside were then and still are today children. This is where our government is currently dropping bombs. We've been told by the city council that it hesitates to make a statement on a ceasefire in Gaza for fear of making our local Jewish residents feel unsafe. I ask you, what about our local Arab residents, our Muslim residents, our Palestinian residents? Our condemnation of the apartheid state of Israel is not an attack on the Jewish faith or the lives of Jews anywhere. We all understand perfectly well what it means to condemn the actions of a government without calling for the eradication of the people within it. With this in mind, I support the resolution put forward by Humboldt for Palestine, resolution for the liberation of Palestine. Passing this resolution would place Arcata firmly on the right side of history and would demonstrate to our Arab, Muslim, and Palestinian residents here that their lives are not disposable. Thank you.
Thank you. Take the next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Luna Gerard, and I would just like to talk a bit about apartheid South Africa. Our US government officially supported the apartheid South Africa even as late as the 1980s. And Nelson Mandela remained on the terrorist watch list until as late as 2008. Now, we all know in retrospect that obviously there was a right side of history in this case, and that the US government was on the wrong side. That is despite organizing since the 1940s in opposition to apartheid South Africa and to the US government's support of that government, as well as a global movement to support boycotting divestment and sanctions. There are many parallels, of course, with the current situation relating to apartheid South Africa, as been abundantly explained by many other people, the genocidal and apartheid practices of Israel. But it is also important to note that Israel supported apartheid South Africa. They sent riot vehicles and weapons to aid in the government's repression of the native black population. And so, aside from all of those parallels, I think it's important to just look at the situation and understand that retrospectively down the line, history will decide that there was a right side to stand on. And in this, and in the case of apartheid South Africa, clearly, the US government was not on that, was not on that side. It did not listen to the people. It did not listen to the US public. Currently, 66% of US voters support a ceasefire. However, only 4% of elected House representatives support a ceasefire. This is a clear parallel, and I think that it's really important for you all as elected as elected officials, because you have the opportunity to stand on the right side of history, despite the fact that much of the government is adamant about standing on the wrong side of history. And you have the opportunity going forward to be remembered as one of the pioneering cities who were, who was willing to go out of their way to stand up for truth and justice and humanity in spite of the governmental pressures not to. And on the flip side of that, there is also the unfortunate prospect of not voting for the ceasefire and being remembered as a city who fell into complacency and allowed, and became just another cog in the support for this apartheid government. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. You got this.
Thanks. Hi, my name is Nadia, and I'm 10 years old. Nobody is immune if they are participating. It outlaws not just genocide itself, it outlaws attempted genocide, incitement to genocide, conspiracy to commit genocide, and here's what's really important, complicity in genocide. And I've argued that many of the crimes that are being perpetrated now in Gaza by the Israelis, the US is very complicit through the finance, one, financing, two, arming, three, diplomatic cover, four, intelligence support, even five, mobilization of some troops, end quote. Craig Mockber, UN human rights official who resigned in objection to US complicity in genocide in Gaza. Tonight, our, our Arcata community gets to add our voices, calling for a ceasefire to save lives in Gaza. I am, I am half-Palestinian and proud. Let's save the children of Gaza, ceasefire now. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take our next speaker, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mateo. I'm nine years old. 500 congressional aides and staff have broken away from the US Congress. 500 aides called for a ceasefire in Gaza after taking the US public's calls, horrified by ethnic cleansing and genocide of ordinary human beings, including lots of babies and children just like me. We get to join them and call for a ceasefire now. I am a half-Palestinian and proud. Let's save the people of Gaza. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take the next speaker, please. Thank you.
Some numbers have already been mentioned. 4,700 confirmed massacred. Those are just the children. 1,700 missing under the rubble. They pulled a girl out who'd been there two days, but they don't have enough. We know there's no fuel. There's no more ability to save them from the horrifying death that they are experiencing now. More than 11,500 people are confirmed massacred in apartheid Israel's concentration. That is not my word. That is Israeli Jew sociologist Baruch Kimberling's word. Quote, he said, quote, "It is the largest concentration camp ever to exist," end quote. It is now an extermination camp. You said never again. You said never again, and those are my kids.
Please, please address the council.
It's becoming again. It is becoming just again. And we're watching it on our screens. We are collectively traumatized and under duress. Those were my kids. We have people in Palestine right now. We are not trying to harm anyone. We are trying to get them to live. Let Gaza live. Ethnic cleansing under international law is three things. One, a war crime. That is not me. International law on this planet says so. Two, it is a crime against humanity. Three, it is genocide. We have collective punishment, a war crime, bombardment of a civilian population. People are not their government. Look what we've done in Libya, Vietnam. I mean, everywhere, Iraq, Afghanistan, keep going, Syria. Should we all be bombed tonight and on TV holding our dismembered children's bodies to the camera to force it on the world to say, please, somebody care? Should we be bombed because of our government's choices? No. That is a civilian population. That is why international law says. It's a war crime. Cutting water, fuel, all that you know, I'm going to skip over it. Apartheid Israel has illegal occupations of Palestine, including blockade that are illegal. Siege, that's illegal. Do we want Jim Crow segregation again? Do we? It's not an unfair comparison. I don't want an ethno-state of Jewish supremacy that is an illegal, more severe form of apartheid than South Africa. The way I don't want Jim Crow segregation here or the genocide of native people again. And that does not mean that I'm a murderer or want to harm people. And it is unfair and totally irrational to say that. By the way, real antisemitism includes Palestinians who are Semites. Zionism is a, is a national, is a nationalism that threatens Semites. It is a supremacist ideology. It is not a code word for Judaism, and Jews deserve to be safe and secure through a just peace for everyone under one secular, united, democratic state on land where indigenous of 480,000 in 1880 Palestinians were and 15,000 Jews were, and we can include everybody who will give up supremacy.
That is your three minutes. Thank you.
Ceasefire now.
We'll take our next commenter, please. Thank you.
Wow, I, I just can't even follow up with that beautiful response, but here I am. Uh, my peers have addressed the humanitarian crisis in Palestine that is unforgivable and textbook genocide, regardless of whatever mistruths or explanations you attempt to slap on it. I will not appeal to your emotions. Instead, I will address the money. $3.8 billion in aid from US annually. I ask you, can you afford that as a city with a crippling homeless and drug problem? As a country, can you afford that? I know this city cannot. All I have to do is walk down Arcata Plaza and look at our people who are unhoused and in, in the depths of substance abuse. That is embarrassing. And we want to spend money and fund a genocide? That's what we want our money to go to? That is embarrassing. Why would you not be quick to condemn our money that could be going to people that need it? To go to a genocide? Humiliating. Humiliating. Thank you for your time. That's all I have to say.
All right, next speaker, please.
Hello, Mayor. Council members. My name is Jose. I'm a Navy veteran, where I spent five years working as a hospital corpsman treating the sick and injured of the Marine Battalion that I served with. Over the past month, I've been called a terrorist for voicing my support for the brave and heroic Palestinian people to simply exist and to hold the same human rights that we claim to uphold. I've witnessed firsthand the destruction of the weapons which are being sent to so-called Israel, where children, their mothers, their fathers, entire generations are being slaughtered indiscriminately by a racist apartheid regime that cares about nothing but creating a new oil and gas pipeline so that a select few billionaires can get richer at the expense of precious human life. I have experienced physical violence by a Zionist who pulled my face mask down and punched my chin while I was exercising my First Amendment rights at the peaceful Palestinian vigil held at the farmer's market. You lose nothing by passing a ceasefire resolution, but by opposing this resolution, we risk the escalation of nuclear war, which will only end in the destruction of humanity and the planet. And to be frank, I doubt anyone in this room is going to be fighting that war out of privilege and straight-up refusal to participate in war crimes. I speak from a place of deep love for humanity. I understand that the Jewish community had horrible atrocities committed against them during the Holocaust, but that does not grant Zionists the right to commit the same atrocities against anyone under the guise of Judaism. I support the passing of the resolution presented before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Ellen. Um, I'm a resident of Arcata, and I grew up on the Uruk Reservation. I'm also a nomak from what is now known as Corning, California. Um, I'm here today as a member of the community in support of the city of Arcata, calling for a ceasefire and calling for the liberation of Palestine. I want to start by saying that last week, one of the council members made a comment that Arcata shouldn't be weighing in on an international issue that has nothing to do with us. I reject that. I reject the idea that we are not all connected. What is happening in Palestine does affect each and every one of us, and the brutal violence, mass murder, and trauma that is being inflicted upon the Palestinian people there today and has been since long before October 7th will weigh on our collective for years to come. I do not say this lightly. I say it with the knowledge that I am alive and standing up here today only because my ancestors also survived a genocide and because the lasting historical trauma from that genocide still heavily impacts every indigenous person I know. The trauma will live on long after the violence has ended. I believe in collective power, and I strongly believe in loudly supporting oppressed people everywhere. As local leaders, you have a responsibility and you have a choice. Please listen to us, and more importantly, please listen to the Palestinian people who are asking for our help. I also want to say that willful ignorance is no longer an excuse. As an elected official, you have power, and you especially have a responsibility to educate yourself. And if after all this time, you haven't taken the time to learn about the history of occupation, ethnic cleansing, and terror in Palestine, then I will say this paraphrased from another activist. You do not have to have a critical analysis of settler colonialism to know that genocide is wrong. I hope that you listened to your constituents today, and I urge you to pass the resolution calling for ceasefire and the liberation of Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take the next speaker, please.
Hello. I would like to know where is the APD? Where is Arcata Police? Because I was promised that they're going to be here today. I don't feel safe here. I don't feel safe to be on the street. So, I would like to know why they're not here. Because the hate that is in this room is not acceptable. So, I would like to know like, um, about this. I was not planning to ask it, but because I was promised that they're going to be here. My name is Tamar, and I was born in Israel. I'm a daughter of Menachem Kruegel, a 93-years-old Holocaust survivor, and the daughter of Tova Kruegel, who, who's a family survived the pogrom in Russia. I have a large family in Israel, and I have many, many Palestinian friends, with whom I have held deep relationship for many years till today. I've lived there in Humboldt Country for 17 years. My husband and I own a house here, and we have raised two beautiful kids here. My husband and I voted for the city council to take care of local matters. We did not vote for the city council to present their opinion about complex geopolitical conflicts as it is not presented before they got elected. This was not an agenda. I consider any statement that comes from this city council regarding the conflict is not legitimate, as it beyond the scope of the city of Arcata. No matter what you decide about the Middle East, Israel is going to exist, and Palestinian people are going to, Palestinian people are going to reside next door. And I'll do my best to support any treaty that resolves this issue. I'm concerned that this city is wasting precious time being concerned about the Middle Eastern resolution rather than providing a safe environment to Palestinian and Israelis to live and to coexist here in Arcata.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Daria, and I was born in Arcata 13 and a half years ago. Just a week before the war started, I was in Israel. I had a wonderful summer full of great times. I spent time with family and friends, including our close Palestinian friends. We did everything regular friends would do. We shared food, we swam in the Sea of Galilee, and we had fun. I've known them all my life. I don't relate to them as Palestinians, but as family friends. Their son, who lives in an Arab village, goes to an Israeli school. The second time we hung out, they brought their family from the West Bank, and the gathering was even more fun. I'm raised in a Jewish-Israeli household where we see people as people, and my Israeli family does not see Palestinians any different than they see their own people. My Jewish friends do not see Arabs any different than they see their own people. For this reason, I do not see why I have to fear being at school since the war started. Why do so many people in this community here in Humboldt stop talking to my family? Why can't I call my parents, Ima and Abba, in public? Why does my family need to reconsider going to the farmer's market, something we do every Saturday? I'm wondering if the city of Arcata can see that the resolution will create more hate and more conflict in my hometown. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Eamon Armstrong. I'm here to express my strong opposition to the proposed resolution regarding the Hamas-Israel war. This resolution is divisive, misleading, and harmful to our community. I have been an upstanding citizen of Arcata since 2007, first studying at the university, then as an environmental scientist for local nonprofits and state government. I have made a home in this area because of the beautiful nature and the beautiful community. There has been occasional violence and hatred, only by unsavory individuals, but I've never experienced the spread of fear and hatred in a group until the Free Palestine protests started. Some of the people in this group may have legitimate concerns for Palestinian friends and family members, as I do. However, many of these people are channeling anger in a direction they don't likely understand. Or even worse, they are channeling anger against Jewish people on purpose. My family is Jewish, and for the first time, I fear for our safety. The resolution claims to support the rights of the Palestinian people and innocent civilians on both sides. I support that too. However, it is, it says that Palestinians have been subjugated by Israel, which clearly takes sides and locally supports hate against Jewish people. The resolution tries to impose a biased view of a complex and longstanding conflict that is thousands of miles away from Arcata. The resolution does not reflect the diversity of opinions and perspectives among the Palestinian people themselves, nor the suffering and oppression they face under the corrupt and authoritarian regime of Hamas. The resolution does nothing to promote peace and justice in the Middle East, but rather it feels hatred and intolerance in our own community. The resolution creates a hostile and unsafe environment for the Jewish residents of Arcata, who are already facing a rise in antisemitism and discrimination. And I want to include, um, other Semites in that, if it's appropriate. I've heard about these experiences from Jewish people and others in our community and in my own family. I urge you to reject this resolution and to take the side of peace and dialogue and to work for the needs of all Arcata citizens. Let us not allow a foreign conflict to divide us, but rather let us focus on the common values and goals that unite us.
Thank you. Take the next speaker, please. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lilah. I have dual citizenship, American and Israeli. And, um, I am very saddened about what happened in Israel on October 7th. Those have been quite horrors, and I, I wrote some words to speak to that, but I would just say that if people are looking for sickening images, they exist on Telegram, which is our Russian messaging app. I'm very saddened about what happened in Israel and also what is happening right now in Gaza. It is absolutely heartbreaking. Nobody can argue with that. I think people's problem is with the language in the resolution, because it doesn't only call for a ceasefire. It has a lot of bias against Israel, and it has incorrect information- It has a lot of bias against Israel and it has incorrect information. I think it's very clear that this topic is dividing the community. And civil discourse is what the local government should encourage, or at the very least, some sort of a task force to craft a resolution that everybody can agree on. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take the next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is George and I'm a member of the Arcata community. So today I'm standing here in calling for support of resolution to support the ceasefire in Palestine. So I was baffled to know about the funding that the US is providing for the war. The news I received on the phone just after everything happened consisted of rhetoric which support war. And this rhetoric where we support war and violence needs to stop. Right now, cities across America are passing similar resolutions condemning Israel's settler colonial occupation of Gaza. I urge this council to call for an end to this genocide and to pass the resolution calling for the liberation of Palestine tonight. Countries around the world support the ceasefire in Palestine. Why don't we support it? Passing this resolution is the right thing to do. This will make me and a lot of people in the community feel a lot safer to know that Arcata does not support war. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Montana and I am an Arcata resident and Cal Poly Humboldt student. Since you read your land acknowledgement, I would like to share the eight stages of white settler colonial denial. They didn't exist. Complete denial of indigenous presence is a given area, country, province, et cetera. Includes denial of indigeneity, i.e. indigenous people are settlers too. If they did, they weren't here. Denial that indigenous people inhabit, travel, harvest, or exist in a specific area, often based off of Eurocentric definitions of evidence of occupation. If they were, they didn't use the land. Denial of the indigenous people have a connection with the land, often based on Eurocentric worldview of land as something to be owned or extracted. Denial that indigenous people have rights to their land, often based on Eurocentric value judgment of primitive versus civilized or nomadic versus sedentary. If they did, they lost. Denial that indigenous people retain their right to their lands, often based on colonially imposed European systems of law/might be made right worldviews. Denial that violations of indigenous rights requires redress, often based on claims redress is disruptive, unfair, reverse racism, and false calls for equality. If they didn't, it doesn't matter anymore. Denial that indigenous rights are still binding and take precedence, often based on false claims of supremacy of colonial legal institutions and systems. If it does, we need to move on. Denial that violations of indigenous rights require redress, often based on claims redress is disruptive, unfair, or reverse racism and false calls for equality. If we can't, we argue. Denial of separateness and indigenous people and rights, often based on attempts to reduce indigenous rights to human rights or to claim indigeneity. I read this to you because we are watching this happen to Palestinians and we are watching this narrative be perpetuated by the Israeli government and our own in the American states. I support the resolution put forward by Humboldt for Palestine, resolution for the liberation of Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Sheri Starr. I usually speak with notes. I'm not going to tonight. I'm very sorry that the council has been put in the position of having to weigh in on foreign policy. I'm really sorry that our local religious leaders have also had to be put in the position of weighing in on foreign policy. I suggest that people who care about this issue do it in a way that can make a difference. Write to your congressman, write to your senators, write to the president, and vote. Let's keep peace here in Arcata. This has obviously been very divisive and has made many members of our community very insecure and frightened, and that includes our Jewish friends and our Muslim friends as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hey, guys. My name is Aqib Ahmed Haq. So I'm going to start off with this question. Would you have supported the ethnic cleansing and genocide of the indigenous whose land we stand on today? I'd like for the council to ponder this question as they sit in the comfort of their home drinking clean water without the shortage of food. As a first-generation Pakistani-American, I stand with my Jewish brothers and sisters. Being a Muslim, our beliefs are closer than most people know. I will stand outside your synagogue and I will protect you with my life if I have to, but don't ask me to stand with the state of Israel. Advocating for a ceasefire and the liberation of Palestine is a pursuit grounded in the principles of justice, empathy, and human rights. It's crucial to emphasize that opposing Zionism, the political ideology, is distinct from being antisemitic. Criticizing policies or actions of a government, in this case, doesn't translate to hatred or discrimination against the Jewish people. It's essential to foster nuanced discussions promoting understanding that supporting Palestinian rights doesn't diminish the importance of combating antisemitism. Our goal is a world where both Jews and Palestinians can live and coexist in peace, acknowledging the legitimate aspirations and rights of all parties involved. But we all must be aware that we can have slavery and peace, as well as injustice and peace. Peace isn't the answer until we have liberation and we are all treated equally. I shouldn't have to ask this from you all, but please stand with humanity. We need a ceasefire and the liberation of Palestine now. Since I have time, I'd like to share a quick poem with you guys. In the land where olive trees stand tall, a tale of struggle echoes call. Palestine yearns for the liberties embraced, a symphony of hope, a resilient grace. Sunsets paint stories on ancient walls, whispers of freedom through the market stalls. Mountains echo tales of a resilient land in yearning for peace hand in hand. From Gaza's shore to the West Bank's hills, a spirit unyielding despite the ills. In the dance of resistance, a people's song, liberation's rhythm, steady and strong. In unity, hearts beat, a steadfast rhyme, dreams of freedom transcend the sands of time. Palestine, resilient, under starlit skies, a chorus of justice where hope never dies. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. My name is Sarai Bordeaux, and I first want to invite my ancestors into this space. And I want to make the comment that the reason that local politics, like the reason this has a place in local politics is because we recognize the connections between what's happening in Palestine and what's happening to natives, what's happening to, like, me every day in Eureka, right? This is not, it's super interesting that people would weigh their uncomfort, their discomfort, their fear of, like, getting yelled at at a protest against, like, babies getting picked at a rebel. Like, it's really interesting that, like, your discomfort, like, it's really interesting that, like, the Eureka in Arcata that black folks have been living in, like, y'all are getting a little taste of it and now, like, we're real upset about it. Like, we're worried about antisemitism, like, we're really, and hey, 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 I don't want, hey, I don't want to be antisemitic. That's not the goal. But it's really interesting to me that people are still able to sit in a space and claim that they didn't see people as Palestinians when they're sitting there calling themselves Israelis. They don't want to see Palestinians. They just want to see people? You don't want to see Palestinians? You don't want to see Gaza? You don't want to see the babies buried? You don't want to see the mothers crying? You don't want to see the connections to black people in this very city? Like, local politics, that's where it's at. That's where we're started. That's why we're here. Like, why, hey, I agree, like, resolutions, whereas, hey, I don't understand that. What I do understand is that there's people here who have put themselves, put their jobs at risk before this was happening. I go to my job every day wondering if calling out a racist is going to get me fired. I wonder about walking down the street, wondering if, like, I'm still going to have a job if I speak my true identity, right? And so people dare weigh their discomfort that they're barely feeling, like, barely feeling, barely feeling, have lived here for decades and are just now feeling the twinge of racism, of discrimination, of I can't walk anywhere, I can't call my people, da-da-da-da-da. Just now? We're just now feeling that? And so how dare we also sit here and say there's no connection to local politics when somebody, I don't even know who it was, there's been a lot of scrolling. I've been watching a lot of murder. But someone was saying the waking up of young black people specifically is Israel's worst nightmare because we realize the connections. We realize the settler colonial state. We realize imperialism. We realize the ongoing, again and again and again. It's the same thing. So what space does local politics have? You could say, hey, we recognize this and we're not going to put the comfort of our citizens in their houses, on their phones, over the lives of babies. 11,000 people. Free Palestine.
That is your three minutes. Thank you. Thank you, folks. They're standing by. We are in the City Hall.
Please, please sit down. Let me, let me remind.
Respect the podium. Please have a seat.
Let me remind you that if you want this thing considered, the council can pull this agenda item and they cannot have it come back again. If you want to vote on it, there's a decorum that you have to abide by. You did not. When you stood up, when you were not at the podium and shouted at somebody in the audience, you did not, but it applied to, it applied to, this is not, this is not, this is not about that. Would you, would you like it to proceed or not?
Thank you, Doug. All right. We will have our next speaker, please.
I'm James Flower. I've lived in Arcata for 23 years. On the city's website, the summary of the United Nations Resolution says that it called for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza and a humanitarian truce, the release of all civilians, the protection of civilians and international institutions, and ensuring the safe passage of humanitarian aid into the Strip. Now, some people here tonight have criticized the US for voting against that. It seems like pretty reasonable language to me. The problem with the proposed resolution is that it takes sides in the dispute. That's way over your pay grade. People have been arguing about this for thousands of years. And so that's the main problem with the resolution. Just keep it simple. End all the violence. Keep it simple. The resolution takes sides, don't take sides. It'll just divide the city. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take the next speaker.
My name is Susan Parsons. I live in Bayside. I work in Arcata. This is Vivian Silver. She reminds me of my sister. My sister, Betsy Parsons, fought for the civil rights of LGBTQ people in the United States, and she's one of 10 people who were honored as game changers for LGBTQ people in the United States. Vivian Silver worked for 50 years. She founded an organization called Women Waging Peace. Hamas terrorists burned her to death in her home, in her quote-unquote "safe room." What Vivian Silver and Betsy Parsons, these two extraordinary women, have taught me is we need to speak so people will listen, and we need to listen so people will speak. There's a lot of bullying going on in this room tonight. Martin Luther King taught me that what affects one directly, what affects one person directly, affects everyone indirectly. That we are all part of the fabric of life. And if we do not work together to listen so we will talk to each other and talk so people will listen to us, then we will all perish as fools. For there is always light if we are only brave enough to see it, if only we're brave enough to be it. That's Amanda Gorman. These are the heroes in my world. This is why I can go to work every day and continue this very extraordinarily difficult thing called being human and walking this journey until death. We are all connected, locally, within our own families, let's start there, and globally. That has always been the truth. I want to say that I heard very many statements tonight that indicate to me that many people do not understand that Semitic peoples have been indigenous peoples in what we call Palestine-Israel for millennia. That means this whole colonial settler business is.
Thank you. That is your three minutes. Okay, okay. Folks, please, no, thank you. You've already got to speak, folks. Yeah. Hey, folks, we want to get through this item. We want to have council discussion. We want to hear the remainder of the public comments. Can we please respect this space, respect the podium, and give people a chance to speak and let them feel comfortable doing that, please? We have a few more speakers here in person. We will take our speakers on Zoom and then we will get down to council discussion. Okay? Thank you.
And for clarification, points of privilege only apply to council members. They do not apply to members of the public.
And I've lived in Humboldt County for 12 years now, and prior to that, in my other places where I lived, I was a peace activist way back until the late 70s on anti-apartheid issues at the campuses when I was a student at UC Davis. I also was part of a Central American Refugee Organizing Project in San Francisco and traveled to a war zone in El Salvador in 1987. And I have witnessed and seen what war does to all humans, but particularly to children. And if anything comes out of this discussion tonight, it's about the children. It's about the children. War is unhealthy for children and other living things. Since I've lived here, I've desired for there to be another peace and justice center. I inherited that sign and I'm hoping that we can find another place because this discussion tonight, it makes it very, very obvious that the city of Arcata needs a place where we can come and dialogue about these issues so that we're not having to argue about them every single solitary time. We need to become an international city of peace. We need to have peaceful dialogue. We need to have a place to gather and we need to recognize that we all belong to each other. And we have to do this for the children of the world. So please, think of the children when you're discussing this resolution. Think of the children. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Hello, Dave Miserv from Arcata. And I come here for peace, for peace in Gaza and for peace in our community. And I think a little background is necessary here, which is that the last meeting, there were also, there were two resolutions brought forward. And it was decided after that meeting, council members suggested it, that we all meet together and come up with a resolution, a single resolution. We met with one of the rabbis and with several other community members and members of the Palestinian Free Palestine Movement. We came up with a resolution, which is what is before you tonight, or was until a new one was brought up. This one was very brief and I think that ended very much to the point. It calls for a ceasefire. The resolution that you have before you and the resolution that's on your agenda has, today I sent out an edit of it, a slight edit. has, today I sent out an edit of it, a slight edit, hopefully to make it even more acceptable to everybody. Because what we need is a ceasefire. And as several people said, to go far beyond that into the ideology is what leads us to conflict. So I want to read this real quick. Whereas the city of Arcata condemns the October 7th, 2023 terrorist attack on Israel by Hamas, which killed over 1,400 Israelis and leaves over 200 held hostage, there is no moral justification for such an attack. And whereas the city of Arcata condemns the collective punishment that the state of Israel is imposing on the Palestinian people in response to the Hamas attack by killing over 11,000 people, over 4,500 of them children, and displacing over a million Palestinian residents of Gaza. And whereas the city of Arcata has a proud history of supporting peace and diplomatic solutions to international conflicts, therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Arcata calls on the US government to demand an immediate ceasefire by all parties involved, including an immediate cessation of all attacks on civilian targets, the return of all hostages to their homes, and ongoing negotiations to cultivate lasting peace and create a system that represents the human rights of all people in the region. So I, along with other people here, ask that you pass this resolution. It's been a custom of the city to speak out on things that affect us all, even if they're from afar. And so I call for peace abroad and peace here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm not seeing any other in-person speakers. We will not be going back and forth with Zoom, so I'm going to close in-person public comment, and we will move to any Zoom comments that we have.
All right, if people are interested in making a Zoom comment, could please go ahead and raise your hand. We will call it, and after the first speaker, I will draw a line in terms of who has raised their hands for speaking on this item. Our first speaker is Breann. Go ahead, Breann.
Hi there. Sorry, my name's Breann Hutchinson, and I'm a resident in McKinleyville and mental health therapist here in Arcata. And I'm here with my daughter. I'm a single mom in tonight. My husband's a doctor, and he's at a pediatric emergency rotation, so I'm going to try to keep it short and sweet. But I'm here in solidarity with the organizers who've brought before you the resolution to ceasefire. I understand that there's a lot of divisiveness and complexity to this issue. A lot more conversation needs to go into it in order for our community to find a peaceful path forward. I'm Quaker at faith, and so in this Quaker tradition, we are pacifist. So we oppose war, and we oppose our tax money and our US citizenship being used to support war. And so, you know, I probably just have to leave it at that, but I will say I attended. I know, Daddy's at work. We'll call him soon. I attended the rallies at the farmer's market, and those who organized it were extremely thoughtful and orienting all who walked in that rally towards safety for ourselves and each other. They are peaceful activists, and I'm sorry to hear that there's been accounts of hatred in our streets because what I'm hearing above all else in everyone's calls is for a peaceful solution and for humanity to exist within our community. So I hope that we can lean in and focus on that. As a mental health clinician, these atrocities, these war crimes that we are seeing on our screens are affecting us all, and they're absolutely affecting the youth in our community. They are seeing dead bodies. And the hard part is, we're just seeing it now, but this is a history, a long, long history of imperialism and fascism all around the world and throughout our country, and we are standing upon the acts of fascism. We are standing upon this land that's been stolen, and I think we all have a call to lean in and have conversations on how to repair, how to repair, and how to listen, and how to stay connected with each other, and most of all, how to keep the kids protected and how to keep them safe. I'm going to leave it at that, and I wish you all well, and thank you.
Thank you. Next online commenter.
Next online commenter is Moto. Go ahead.
Oh, Moto, I think that might be me. I couldn't, it wouldn't let me put my name in. Hi, this is Nimaya. I'm Nimaya Eliahu. And I have lived in the Arcata area for over 35 years. And I'm a proud member of Temple Beth El and a proud Jew. At first, I was feeling, you know, pretty opposed to a resolution because the ones that I had seen felt that they weren't holding both peoples. But the resolution, as Dave Miserv just read it, I can totally get behind that because I feel like what's happening to the Palestinian people is devastating, and what happened to the Israeli people is devastating, and killing is devastating. But to equate the desire and the need for killing and war to stop with all these other ideologies about Zionism and all these buzz phrases about white settler colonialism and all these things, they shouldn't be conflated with what's going on there. It's very hard to hear when, when, you know, there was a third of the people in Palestine were Jewish. 60% of the Jews in Israel are Mizrahi Jews, are Middle Eastern Jews. This idea that it's white supremacy, I just don't understand where all of that even comes from. There's more Middle Eastern Jews in Israel than there are European Jews, so it just gets too, there's too much misinformation out there. And I think that if we could just keep it with where our hearts are, which is that we want the killing to stop, then I think that will be okay. But all of this misinformation about how, you know, how the state of Israel was started and who lives there and who's being, you know, it's, it doesn't belong here. It's so, not only is it complex, it's just the amount of disinformation is just unbelievable. So I would like, I would just want us here in our community to find a way to just dialogue with each other without screaming at each other. And yes, we can say, please stop the killing, but to have an opinion about how these, this, these countries are dealing with each other over there, we have, we have, we have no idea and no right unless we're Israeli or Palestinian. We have no, you know, yes, stop killing, but we have no right. We don't understand the long history. Jews have been there for thousands of years.
Thank you. That is your three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, we'll take the next speaker on Zoom.
Next speaker is Roy. Go ahead, Roy. Screen name, Roy.
Screen name, Roy.
Hi, my name is Roy Gomez. I've been a local resident for most of my life. I raised my three children here, went to Arcata and through the Arcata school system. And I was putting my daughter to bed and was listening, and then really felt compelled to come down and actually listen and feel kind of the love in the room because I really believe that behind all the rhetoric and behind all of the divisiveness is love either for, you know, our brothers in Israel, our brothers and sisters in Israel, or our brothers and sisters in Palestine. And I think really, the council should kind of consider understanding that war in general is wrong, and we're, you know, here trying to figure out this, you know, this budget and, you know, I think Congress, you know, Democrats and Republicans are need to consider the fact that we can't afford wars anymore. It doesn't really, it conflicts with domestic issues. We have so many different domestic issues from, you know, houseless people and to the drug epidemic, and really like, we're in debt, and to raise the debt ceiling so that we could go fund more wars, no matter where they're at, it's just wrong. And I don't believe we, you know, with everything that's happening domestically, we can't afford to take money to raise our debt. I mean, who does that? Like, you know, if you had a situation where your two good friends were litigating against each other, which, you know, everybody knows that litigation is war, and, you know, if you've been through it, that situation, you know, but one of those friends just happens to be your best friend, and, you know, are you going to take out more debt to go help support your friend's battle and your friend's war with their neighbors? Like, we have so much going on domestically. I think this resolution should should be addressed to funding wars when we have all these domestic issues, and we shouldn't be going into further debt as a country to fund any wars. So I think the less divisive approach at this, and so that we could all look at each other locally and understand that we all believe, everybody in that room I'm sure believes, that war is horrible, that war is something we don't want. We don't want war, and we can't afford it. No matter what side you're on, like, we have to all agree that we have enough domestic issues. And if the council.
Thank you, Roy. That is your three minutes. Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Leila. Go ahead.
Is that okay? Thank you. Assalamu alaikum wa rahmatullahi wa barakatuhum, which in Arabic means hello, peace to you, and may you receive the Creator's mercy and blessings. Yes, my name is Leila Roberts, and I live in Humboldt Hill. And thank you to the city council for bringing forth this resolution for public discussion. I supported Mand both for an immediate ceasefire and hostage exchange. In passing it, we would join a large and growing number of leaders across the country pleading for sanity to prevail. We know about the cities of Providence and Richmond, but there are more to come. We would also join the 500 federal political appointees and their staff who signed their names to a statement protesting the Biden administration's policy regarding Israel just this week. And in this resolution, in this, in this commitment, I also see a commitment to learning the lessons of our own past. We're deeply familiar here with the generational trauma that genocide, land theft, child theft, and cultural oppression creates. I am Arab-American, was born and raised in North Africa and in the Middle East. In my circle of care are Israeli Jews and Palestinian Muslims and Christians who have lost people they love, both to the Hassan and Qassim Brigades' shocking and brutal attacks of October 7th, and to the government of Israel's illegal, brutal, and indiscriminate military assault in Gaza. I crossed my first Israeli checkpoint in Jerusalem in H5, holding my Muslim-Arab mother's hand. And folks, my head is full of dead babies. I have been sick with grief for 40 days, literally. This is the price of being human. The body knows we are all connected. But the lesson I take from our elders in the Movements for Justice is this: Our feelings are legitimate, but they are not enough. We are all obliged to learn and deepen and sharpen our political analysis at a time like this, yes, even locally. Judaism and Islam and Christianity are blessed faiths, and they are not the issue here. A nation-state that we're allied with committing mass murder, and our own nation-state being complicit in that genocide, that is the issue. And we absolutely must take a stand together. If not us, who? I am aware, I am afraid to wear my kithia in public, but I am more afraid to be forced to bear witness to bloodied, burnt, and broken dead babies. We know our federal government has pursued many unjust wars. It often ignores international law, and right now it is ignoring the voice of the majority of the US population who wants a ceasefire. You may even have heard that many of the families of Israeli hostages are demanding just that, an immediate ceasefire and hostage exchange. Let's listen to those most harmed.
Thank you, Leila. That is your three minutes. Thank you for your comments. We'll take our next speaker.
Our next speaker is Orin. Go ahead, Orin.
Hello. My name is Orin Ashon. I'm a resident of Eureka and a business owner here. I'd like to read a few words I wrote down today. As a Jewish resident and a business owner in Eureka, I am asking you to reconsider your involvement. This will set a dangerous precedent in this county and will put all residents here in great danger. Israel is my birthplace, was brutally attacked on October 7th by an evil terrorist organization, which was morally and financially backed by an evil axis of countries who want nothing but evil. Calling for a ceasefire without acknowledging that Hamas is a terrorist organization, not acknowledging that Hamas is using civilian facilities like schools, mosques, mosques and hospitals as their bases, and forcing civilians to stay in Gaza, using them as human shields while firing rockets at Israeli civilians for the past 20 years and more is selective language that does not acknowledge the reality of what is going on. I urge you to craft your wording very carefully in a way that does not legitimize hatred toward any minority beyond any shadow of a doubt. I asked you not to extend a hand to murderous terrorists. Please notice, who were their first casualties? There were peace-loving people, just like yourself. Instead of advocating for a ceasefire, I advocate you, I urge you to advocate for peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, is that me?
Yeah.
We're just waiting to guess on how to say my name. It's Jahan. Hi, I wrote some words. I hadn't planned on speaking this evening, but I felt compelled. Hello, council. My name is Jahan, and I'm here to support the city of Arcata passing a ceasefire initiative. And here is one of the many reasons why. Many of us have spoken tonight in hopes of appealing to your humanity. However, as humanity seems to be something we're all running short on these days, I'm here to appeal to your pocketbook and argue that, in fact, this is not a matter of foreign affairs, but a very real and present American issue that directly affects every single taxpayer in this room. Many folks don't understand what is going on in Palestine. We've been told for nearly a century that it's complicated, that it's a religious war, and that we have no business involving ourselves. There have been those here tonight who have asserted we should be minding the business of Arcata only, not involving ourselves in foreign matters. I am here to say that you do not have to understand Palestine and Israel to understand that the United States of America is spending billions of dollars on foreign war for financial and power gains while they leave Americans starving, homeless, sick with no access to care, in debt and underemployed. Teachers in this country sell feet pictures on OnlyFans as a side hustle because we don't pay them a living wage. The American people are suffocating under the weight of a massive recession and being told every time we push for change that the US cannot afford to address those issues. However, as if out of a magic hat, the government is pulling $14 billion to send to aid a nuclear superpower in a foreign war. How can we, as Americans, accept this? How can we tolerate our tax dollars being spent this way? According to an article by Huffington Post, reps, senators, and the President of the United States are all receiving an unprecedented number of calls, emails, and faxes demanding an immediate ceasefire, and the cries of their constituents are not being heard. Recent polling numbers show the bipartisan majority of American citizens support a ceasefire. 66% of all polled people and 80% of Democrats, according to Polling for Change. polled people, and 80% of Democrats, according to Polling for Change. And yet, our state and federal reps will not make the call. Local government at its heart and soul is meant to represent the people of a city. And it seems to me today that the people have spoken in overwhelming majority favor of a ceasefire, whether or not they support this initiative. Our local government has an obligation to raise their voice to the powers that be, and supporting this ceasefire initiative is the first step. No more American tax dollars to fund a genocide. Think what we--
Thank you, Jahan. That is your three minutes. Thank you.
--fraction of $14 billion. Ceasefire now.
Next speaker is Jacob. Go ahead, Jacob.
Hello. Um, I didn't have anything prepared for for tonight, but I wanted to say good evening and that I am in full support of for ceasefire and the liberation for Palestine. Um, I'm an early-career scientist and a master's in biology student at Cal Poly Humboldt. And in the last 40 days, the only thing occupying my mind are the horrific images of the violence that the settler colonial state of Israel is deploying on the indigenous people of Palestine. Um, I also speak as a trans queer person, um, and that I disavow any effort to to pinkwash the situation. Um, and so I wanted to read a couple of stories from Queer Palestinians based off of um Queering the Map, which is a project to digitally archive the stories of queer people. Um, "This is where I first fell for you. It was 2021, the last major Israeli bombardment on Gaza. You never knew you were the reason that I first listened to my favorite bands or watched Portrait of a Lady on Fire. Everything comes back to you. Now you are a student abroad, and Israeli occupation bombs may take everyone and everything you ever loved away. Your mom, your home, your memories. I'm so sorry the world failed you, that your mom, sister, best friends, everything is lost in this genocide." This is, there's another one. Um, "I've always imagined you and me sitting out in the sun, hand in hand, free at last."
Office in Arcata, in Eureka, upstairs. Do you remember the office that was there before we talked?
Our next speaker. Here we go. Jacob, are you still there?
Do you continue?
Oh, yeah. Sorry. Uh, there was someone else speaking.
Old spot. We're like, it was kind of burned down over there.
Uh, Roy Gomez, can you mute yourself, please? Or can we mute him? Yes. Okay, you have about one minute left of of your time. Um, Jacob, if you want to go ahead.
I'll continue reading more stories. "I've always imagined you and me sitting out in the sun, hand in hand, free at last. We spoke of all the places we would go if we could. Yet you are gone now. If I had known that bombs raining down on us would take you from me, I would have gladly told the world how I adored you more than anything. I'm sorry I was a coward." Um, there's another one. "I don't know how long I will live, so I'll just want this to be my memory here before I die. I'm not going to leave my home. Come what may. My biggest regret is not kissing this one guy. He died two days ago. We had told how much we like each other, and I was too shy to kiss last time. He died in the bombing. I think a big part of me died too, and soon I will be dead. To Eunice, I will kiss you in heaven." Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
All right. Our next speaker is Emily. Go ahead, Emily.
Uh, hello. Yes, uh, this is Emily. And um, I would just like to say, uh, as somebody that lived in Israel and right near the Gaza Strip, um, on Akavuts, uh, like the other Israelis there, I had Palestinian friends. I have the doctor on my kibbutz is Palestinian. Uh, they're very intertwined cultures. Um, and since it's been so complicated to everybody, I want to simplify it a little bit. And it basically goes like this. If Hamas puts down their guns, there'll be peace. If the Israelis put down their guns, they will be dead. So that's what a ceasefire is asking for. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Um, city manager, how many more commenters on Zoom do we have?
There are two more commenters.
Because I I know we have some requests to take a quick break. Okay. So so we'll take these last two comments and then we will take a quick bathroom break and come back.
All right. Our next speaker is, um, it says frame, twice.
Uh, my apologies, it didn't change. My name is Prakarta Bakar. Um, I am a substitute teacher in the Humboldt District, and um, I wanted to join this meeting and say I stand with Palestine and the 10,000 dead Palestinians and this resolution. I stand against the Israeli apartheid and its occupation. I would also like to say any person using this conflict to inflate antisemit- antisemitic rhetoric is not part of this movement. We actively participate in um the Arcata um demonstrations, and um I want to um also put in um, I like the idea of people who have a problem with the protests, specifically people feeling that it's coming from a place of antisemitism to join these um demonstrations. Conversations are what's going to help us understand um the genocide that is happening and how one-sided the death of these Palestinians truly are. For, I would also like to say, um, we are actively participating this through our taxes and our occupation of stolen native land. Our eyes should not be closed, and if you feel uncomfortable in the streets, maybe it's time to do something about this. We should feel uncomfortable. We should feel disheartened. Palestinians are dying every day. Children are dying every day. And it's time to say something and not turn our eyes away, no matter how hard it hurts. Thank you.
All right. And our last online speaker is Amy. Go ahead, Amy.
Hi, uh, my name is Amy. I'm an alumni of the Environment and Community Program at Cal Poly Humboldt. Uh, I'm sick right now, so I unfortunately could not make it in person to stand side by side with my fellow community members. I'm calling in to express my complete and wholehearted support for the resolution for the liberation of Palestine put forward by Humboldt for Palestine. I echo support for the resolution in demanding an immediate ceasefire to stop this current iteration of Israel's genocide of the Palestinian people, which has been going on for over 75 years, and to remind you that violence does not exist in a vacuum. In this light, I wanted to highlight just one of the many manifestations of violence enacted by the Israeli state through the occupation forces, also known as the Israeli Defense Forces, or IDF. I wanted to encourage folks here to research the project of deadly exchange to fully understand how the US and Israel partner in carceral violence that manifests across our local communities, including in Humboldt. Both the US and Israeli governments perpetuate the deadly falsehood that violence against some communities will create security for others. This deadly exchange brings together local police, ICE, Border Patrol, and FBI from the US, with soldiers, police, and agents from, agents from Israel. And in these programs, quote, "Worse practices are shared to promote and extend discriminatory and oppressive policing practices that already exist in both countries, including racial profiling, massive spying and surveillance, deportation and detention, and tax on human rights defenders." These exchanges are organized by a range of governmental and non-governmental actors. I wanted to bring this up to highlight the connected inherent settler colonial violence that exists between the Israel and the US, and the necessity of a collective safety and a collective justice. As I keep hearing people tonight refer to the need for, quote, "peace," and to, quote, "stay out of the politics of other places," and that, quote, "this issue is too complex." But I am fully aware that people here only making vague calls for peace tonight really mean they'd rather us remain ignorant and apathetic to the genocide and ethnic cleansing of the Palestinian people going on in front of our eyes. It is not complex. It is genocide. Peace and justice will occur when Palestine is free. You cannot do a performative land acknowledgement in one breath and criticize Palestinians' right to freedom in another. Blood is on the hands of every politician, local included, journalists, influencers, or others who have spread the lies and propaganda put forth by the apartheid government manufacturing consent for genocide. I am with my community members in condemning the ongoing and continuous ethnic cleansing of Palestinians in Gaza, at the West Bank, and all of Palestine, and naming collective punishment as an explicit war crime, as well as condemning the slaughtering of over 11,000 people, including over 4,500 children in Gaza, and condemning the forced displacement of over one million Palestinians in Gaza. The City of Arcata must demand an immediate ceasefire, must demand the safe passage of humanitarian aid, must demand a permanent end of the financial and military aid to the occupying government. I urge the council to provide unyielding support for Palestinian liberation. I ask every single one of you council members if you'll be able to look back on this moment and be proud of your silence, your apathy, and your inaction. Please join the many members of your community, as well as the millions and millions of people around the world demanding a ceasefire and a free Palestine by passing the resolution for the liberation of Palestine. Thank you.
That was fast. Okay. Thank you. Um, at this point, we are going to close public comment. Um, we've had a couple bathroom requests from up here, so we are going to take a quick five-minute break, um, and then come back for council discussion. Okay. Thank you. All right, folks, please take a seat. If you are staying, we would like to continue. Thank you. Okay, thank you, folks. We are going to reconvene and start again in the essence of time. All right. Um, I will open it up to the council for questions, comments, statements. Um, I know we have been presented with the language that is in our agenda, um, some revised language of that, an alternative resolution brought to us this evening as well. I don't know if that's what you're accepting. Okay, I don't know what's happening over there. Um, and then so, you know, what what direction people are going, if anybody wants to make a statement. If anybody wants to make a statement, I'll turn it over to the council or I can lead us off too, but.
Yeah, no, just a point to discuss. I'm curious, you know, what you guys think. So the resolution that's in our agenda is very different than the one that was in our blue folder that was discussed earlier. And coming to the meeting, my intention was to discuss the one that's in our agenda because that was the collaboration. And I was very impressed and grateful that our community could come together with some very diverse views and craft a statement that showed collaboration and working together. And so that's what I was here to discuss. As we've listened to the public comment, it's been pretty clear that we're not all discussing the same resolution. There's a lot of, I've heard ceasefire a lot, but I feel like I'm hearing it in very, very different ways. I don't think, the idea of simply a ceasefire is probably something that the community could get behind, but it's more, you know, what we've been presented with is more, there's more behind, more asks beside just a ceasefire. So some of the members of that group that crafted that resolution stood up and said that they no longer support it anymore. I mean, and I understand that. They tried. People realized that as they went back to their respective communities, there was, you know, there wasn't support for that, and I understand that. But that puts me in a different position than I expected to be in. So I'm, you know, there's not, the crafters of this are not, well, not, some are, but most are not supporting this work. And so that's my hesitation on the ordinance that is in our packet.
Well, I was just going to add on that topic for me. You know, I am ready to move forward with the resolution that is in the packet or, you know, if it's amenable to other folks that, you know, want to see even that more just really, I'm going to kind of point at Dave here, that that language that is just, you know, ceasefire, this is what happened, and we want peace, and we want peace now. And, you know, if folks are amenable to that, I'm willing to work for that, too.
Just from what I, from the diversity of opinions that I've heard, I really think that the only thing that we could do that would, and not that it will make anyone very happy, because I understand that it won't, but would be something extremely simple. Because if we go beyond anything that is beyond that, then it does change.
Yeah, and I do think anything that simple would just be merely performative. You know, I was very against this resolution even being on the agenda, but since it has been, you know, I'm actually glad because I got to listen to three hours of trauma and pain and, you know, thoughts that from both sides. And at the end of the day, you know, I'm glad that everybody got a chance to speak their truths. I hope that people continue to talk to each other, but I do not accept this resolution.
I want to check with our council member that is on Zoom to see if she does have anything to add to this conversation or any statement that she would like to make at this point.
Hi. So I guess I would want to concur with Councilmember Matthews in that we don't want this to be performative. And it feels like no matter what we do, it's going to be wrong. We've had so many iterations of this resolution. I'm actually confused. I would be surprised if the community wasn't confused as well and which one, what verbiage. While symbolic actions are important, I feel like this resolution will contribute nothing towards peace in the Middle East. It will, however, further divide our community, you know, and hearing from folks on both sides, you know, hearing that Temple Bethel, the only Jewish temple in Northern California, now requires a paid armed guard to hold services because local police are unable to provide services. You know, as pointed out by a constituent, many, many letters that we've gotten on both sides that, you know, and, you know, we've heard from both sides that the Middle East war should not be the subject of a council meeting. We are charged first and foremost with the safety and security of all Arcata citizens. And that's what I, I feel like we have a moral responsibility to keep our citizens here locally safe. You know, I would love it if somehow our proclamation made a difference, that we would wake up tomorrow and there was a ceasefire. But I think more importantly, as one of our constituents came up, I think it might have been Sheri, saying that in order to make a difference, then we need to look not locally, but we need to contact our senators, our president. You know, I could go on and on. So I guess, you know, being that this resolution has been put forth, I'm going to have to say no.
I just, I've been overwhelmed with the eloquence of a lot of you. I will just have you know that local government is hard. None of us ran for office with the vaguest idea that this was going to be, you know, something that we had to grapple with. So run for office, you know, keep the conversation going. My term's up in 2026, run for my spot. But I'm here now, and I'm going to say no.
So I did prepare some words that I wanted to share because I kind of don't share the sentiment. Because at first I did, that this isn't in our wheelhouse. But then I reflected on why I ran for office. And I think an important piece of that is to have a platform and to be able to give voice to that platform and to listen to people. And so before I go too far off script, I mean, just as a teacher of history and of ethnic studies, I've done a lot of grappling with this particular history and also, you know, systems thinking that plays into this. So I'm just going to read what I wrote. But so sometimes we need to have uncomfortable conversations up here where we don't always agree because our community has brought us here. Our community has no room for hate of any kind. We stand against antisemitism, Islamophobia, and other forms of oppression and hate in our community, and support peace and justice both internationally and locally. Arcata has a long history of taking stances on international issues from the Iraq War to weighing in on the threat of nuclear weapons, to being part of the sanctuary city movement to this moment we find ourselves in now. We have a generation here of students, writers, scholars, thinkers, activists that are calling on their communities to dismantle narratives of settler colonialism like we demand in our own land acknowledgement. We have the opportunity to impact these legacies of colonialism in real time as we look at the imperialist history that has impacted the stability of the Palestinian people and the entire Middle East and honestly, the world for generations. My conversations with local leaders in this movement has brought to the forefront the intersectionality of these conflicts and how standing for Palestinian freedom and for a peaceable solution in the Middle East has ripples of impact to marginalized communities everywhere. We have the power to call for peace, and my argument is largely from a place of condemning the acts of the American government and that American aid is being used to further militarize in the face of humanitarian crisis. We as citizens of the United States can say no more. We can demand that our tax dollars are not spent on weapons and arms that are being used in the indiscriminate killing of civilians. We must hold other nations of the world accountable and hold ourselves and our own country accountable for this type of violence. Today, the Security Council of the United Nations, with support from two permanent members, France and China, passed a resolution calling for urgent and extended humanitarian pauses in corridors throughout the Gaza Strip, focusing in on the international urgency to end violence and make sure that all residents in Gaza have access to humanitarian aid and basic necessities like food and water. Passing this resolution and calling for a ceasefire will have Arcata join countless other entities, elected officials, communities that have done the same, including the cities of Richmond, Providence, Rhode Island, Cudae, California, and more than 500 U.S. officials that have condemned Biden's Israel policy, representing more than 40 government agencies, including the State Department. We have local partners in the Uroch Tribe, the Humboldt County Democratic Central Committee, and the City of Eureka will also be looking at this resolution at their next meeting. We look at our own local community, protests taking place on the streets of Eureka, the Arcata Plaza, coming here to our council chambers. These people stand in solidarity with thousands, hundreds of thousands of Americans protesting in D.C., New York, San Francisco, being arrested in the federal building in Oakland, and attending meetings in Berkeley, California. The people of this nation are speaking, and they are demanding ceasefire. And so I stand with those in this room and will continue to work with those of you that I've already been working with and in our community to bring folks together, to keep this issue in the forefront and advocate to write and communicate with our members of Congress, and stand with our members of Congress that are already working tirelessly to have these voices be heard. Because I, again, that's another reason I ran for office. I have been let down by elected officials too many times in this country, not standing up for people and for humanity and for, you know, what is right. And I stand with those members of Congress like Ocasio-Cortez and Ilhan Omar and Cori Bush that are bringing these resolutions to the floor and making Congress talk about it. And so I move, you know, I would move forward with either of these, you know, resolutions before us tonight. I don't think that's what's going to happen, but I will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 234-21, the resolution that is in our agenda packet, calling for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza. Okay. And not hearing a second, that motion dies. And so, okay, that's the end of that agenda item. Thanks. Okay, we will now continue with our next new business item this evening, which is a large one, which is to consider direction to staff on the General Plan 2045 Comprehensive Update. Do you need to take a break?
Nope.
Okay. Okay, folks, we are going to continue on with our business items. If you would like to continue conversation or talking to people, please head outside or stay here and be quiet. Yeah.
All right.
All right. So again, Item C under New Business Tonight, Consider Direction to Staff on General Plan 2045 Comprehensive Update. Do we have a staff report this evening?
Yeah. Mayor, Council, and Community, this item before you tonight is the result of conversations from the City Council Planning Commission Study Session, last study session that we had on the general plan. And during that study session, one of the planning commissioners actually brought up, as we were talking about some of the policies that were specific to the Gateway, brought up the concept that several of the policies that were currently housed within the Gateway chapter would be appropriate to be throughout the community without the entire general plan. And so this item really is just seeking direction. A couple of the council members and a couple of the other.
Can we please minimize the conversation? We are trying to continue our business agenda items. Thank you. Thank you.
Please leave them open. Yeah, thanks. But appreciate the idea. All right, the item before you tonight really stems from the last City Council Planning Commission Study Session around the general plan policies. And during that study session, it was a planning commissioner that initially brought up the concept that there were a lot of policies that went through significant engagement and development by the planning commission that are housed in the chapter that is called the Gateway and that really should be citywide. And so there was some light discussion around that from other council and planning commissioners. And that discussion is really, is what resulted in the agenda item before you tonight. And it is a check-in point from staff, just really looking at if that is a direction policy that the entire council would like to look at, broadening those policies, that that is something that staff would like to know now if we are to pivot and to kind of work on what that would look like as we spread some of those policies through the general plan. So that really is the impetus behind how that agenda item got on the agenda tonight is from that study session. I did just, because we've got our city attorneys kind of looking through fresh eyes of all of our planning, you know, some of our planning documents, including this planning process, you know, just said, can you just think of it with fresh eyes, not having necessarily the history of, you know, how we got here, and say, you know, what makes sense from an outside perspective, just looking at that. So I can ask Doug to comment on that a little bit. We did put all, I did ask staff to pull out all the individual policies and put those in kind of a large table that is in your staff report, not expecting to go through that in detail tonight, but really just looking for that pulse direction. Is that something that you want the staff, the planning commission, to work on in terms of broadening, you know, I'd say a majority of the policies that are sitting in the current Gateway section into, you know, basically the general plan citywide? So with that, I'll just see if Doug had some comments and then we'll try back to.
Yeah, so council, you know, the things we did when we were going through, right now we're kind of in the draft environmental impact report stage, which means that we're at the stage where first draft has kind of come in for the consultants and we're going through and we're looking at it. We've had a chance now to kind of be part of the community for almost two months and get a feel for some of the issues that you're facing, as well as kind of look at, you know, from a financial perspective, maybe what makes, what makes sense, as well as like from a planning perspective, working with David and your planning department to figure out whether or not there are some planning recommendations that we could make to you that might make sense to kind of have consistency. So I want to be really clear, tonight, we are not talking about Gateway. We are only talking about Gateway in the context of taking some of the principles that are in that and extrapolating it to the community at whole. And taking those concepts and the money that we have made available to us through grants and cost savings that would be realized, to be able to maybe figure out whether or not this council would like to consider taking some of those concepts that have received a lot of comment and attention and maybe make those citywide, which would avail us of not potentially spending money later on to redo efforts as, or to patchwork the city to have some of these principles put into specific areas, again, having it to be community-wide. We are at what I would call the perfect pivot point, but if you were going to deviate and take those principles and make them citywide, that to go further would mean that we would expend money that if you were to ever change your mind, we would lose. And we're at the pivotal time to be able to make those changes while still being able to realize the timelines that are associated with the grant funding and things that are available. There's no guarantee, and I think David will probably talk to this, that if we go citywide, that we'll be able to keep the grant money, and we would probably recommend that you budget to not keep it. But this gives us the best opportunity to potentially keep it and avail ourselves of it. So with this, again, it's about taking what has been viewed as kind of project ideas, making them citywide ideas. And I think it's important to mention that the zoning code and changes like that, those are, those are separate documents from what we're talking about. We're talking about general plan guidance and things of that nature. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, but I think David is going to pick up from here.
Or do we have any questions for Doug about that?
Well, I think depending on the will of the council. But I should just comment that that is a good point that our city attorney White brought up, is that all, all that at least staff heard that came up at the Planning Commission Study Session was looking at the overall base policies. There will still be a form-based code. There are still several infill opportunity sites that are identified within the current general plan. It is the city's desire to have. It is the city's desire to have as individual form-based code for each of those areas. That will, so there will still be a specific Gateway form-based code should the council choose to go further down this path. And there would also hopefully be money in the new grant that you just authorized application for, to develop out those form-based codes and those other infill areas that would be specific to those regions. So with that, maybe we'll pause for just questions, general procedure, and then we can certainly get into other details if you'd like.
Great. Yeah, do we have any questions to start off with?
Did you have a presentation, or, I mean?
I, I think I'll respond to questions at this point.
Okay, so I'll just, I guess this is a night for tough conversations. So, you know, I have been involved in talking about the Gateway Area Plan since 2019, when I was on the Economic Development Committee. I was appointed to the City Council in 2021. We've been talking about the Gateway Area Plan. I have spent my whole time on this council, you know, focusing on this very specific plan. We directed the planning commission and gave them a timeline to come up with, you know, their view. We've had study sessions. At this point, I feel like, I feel like we're so close to the end with this Gateway Area Plan. I just want to sign it and start building some houses, and then, you know, we can talk about the rest of the general plan. I just, I, I mean, unless there's more, I mean, don't get me wrong, like, wide streets, bike lanes, all of those things are wonderful, and I hope and will make sure that they are in the general plan, that iteration, but right now, you know, I feel like Sarah, I'm sorry, Mayor Schaefer, and Councilmember White and I, you know, have really felt the weight of this decision, and I feel like it would kind of undermine the responsibility that the three of us felt and the work that we put into it to all of a sudden say, you know, let's just blend it in with the rest. I, yeah.
Well, that was helpful because that, from my perspective, I wanted to hear from the three of you, because I, I feel like that deserves a pretty heavy weight, because you have carried the weight. And I just want to be really clear that even part of the reason, like, that it's on here is I was one of the people that raised the question, asking if it should be, and it was a question. It wasn't that I necessarily think it should, but as I was reading, because I have been essentially, you know, blocked out of a lot of this, so as I was reading the general plan with fresh eyes, and a planning commissioner suggested something that I was actually thinking, and then I kind of added to what was said in that meeting and, and brought up the question of, are we handling it the right way? And just to be really clear, it's not that I was dying to mix into this conversation, because I've seen the way my colleagues have been treated, and so, like, no.
Don't worry, your time is coming.
I was, you know, I was fine to be recused, but it's also my job to serve when I should. And I, in that meeting and reading the general plan, I just questioned. So I guess for me, you know, do definitely, I want to hear what you guys have to say. And it was, it's my understanding, and I, David, I'm looking at you to correct me if I'm getting it wrong, but that we were looking at some, like, the, some of the principles being folded into the general plan, and then the, like, the specifics, like, you know, people are afraid of, that we're talking about higher buildings, you know, seven-story buildings in other parts of town, and that's not what this discussion is, because it's my understanding that we would have a separate form-based code for each neighborhood that we are addressing. Therefore, I would still be recused from the Gateway, which is, again, fine with me. And I'm just emphasizing that because words keep getting put in my mouth that just aren't true. And if we, so I'm open, is what I'm saying, and just to whatever we think is the best process forward, and if, you know, if there's four of us here, and if the three of you feel like the, the path that we're on is the right path, then I absolutely respect that. I'm just, I'm questioning if it's the right path, and maybe we should just veer a little bit, so.
Kimberly, hand us up two.
I will let, I will let Kimberly go first. Go ahead.
Thanks. So I guess I wanted to clarify something first. Did our city attorney say that if we go citywide, we will lose that grant money that we fought so hard for?
So the, the grant funding that we have for the Gateway Area Plan is largely through our Salk grant, the Sustainable Agricultural Lands Commission Grant, and Conservation Grant, excuse me, is about $250,000. And we, when this agenda item was scheduled, we had initial conversations with our representative, and they, they actually understood that the, the purpose of their funding was largely to support infill development, which would in turn protect the green belts around the city of Arcata. That was the way that we wrote the grant, and that was why they awarded it. And so our rep recognized that, you know, having more protection of, you know, those ag lands through more infill development would enhance the purpose of the grant, and was receptive to having a discussion around modification. Obviously, our rep wasn't able to, you know, make a call, and we weren't asking them to make a call on that conversation. And in fact, we asked them not to put any energy into, you know, bringing in others in their organization to address that until we heard from the council whether or not they wanted to pursue this or not. And so I left that conversation encouraged, that we would be able to make a, an amendment to our grant agreement, but without, you know, a surety to that fact. So my recommendation is that the council anticipate that if they eliminate the Gateway Area Plan, that staff would work hard to try and retain those Salk funds, but that they wouldn't be guaranteed.
Okay, thank you. That was, um, thank you. That's helpful. Um, I want, you know, I'm sure that everybody attended last night's Planning Commission, and I just want to clarify, I know that we had brought this to the table because Dr. Judith Mayer, Planning Commissioner, had said that it would be great if several of these policies could be citywide. And I remember at the study session that I said, yeah, I concur. The two, there were two, and I'm sure that there could be a couple others, but I guess, I feel like we are, the two that she was talking about was inclusionary zoning, which was discussed last night at the Planning Commission, and then the other one that she was speaking about was bike facilities. And as Councilmember Matthew said that, you know, she wants to make sure that we have wide street bike lanes, and, and so I just want to say that that's not off the table, because, you know, we've been getting emails from constituents, CRTP, because those are very good things, and they want to make sure that those do go citywide, and they can. And we can do that without having to fold our Gateway Area Plan element into the general plan. And I feel like with all of the work, as Judith had pointed out, it will be a slap in the face to the Planning Commission. It's definitely a slap in the face to the community and everyone that has been working so hard, in my humble opinion. I would prefer, my vote would be to keep it and retain it as an element of its own, and certainly those things that we have worked so hard and we like that should be possibly in citywide, that we put it in the general plan accordingly. One of the other things that, how do I say this, and, well, one of the things that was brought up by Judith was that the two council members that she had asked, David Loyah, our city, our community development director, who, because it said, well, it stated several council members and a planning commissioner wanted this to come on the agenda, and so she was left scratching her head. I was left scratching my head like, well, who? And as it turned out, I feel like it was a little bit mischaracterized for Judith, because she did not want this folded in. That was never her intention to abandon the Gateway Area Plan element. It was more like, we want to include inclusionary zoning and the bike facilities in that general plan. And the two council members who requested it, according to David Loyah, was Stacy Atkinsalzar and Alex Stillman, both according, you know, to the Fair Political Practice Commission are required not to participate. And I know that Doug mentioned in the very beginning that this is not, what did he say? This is not the Gateway, we're not talking about the Gateway Plan, we're talking about the general plan. But I've already heard several people on the council refer to it as the Gateway Vote. So I guess, you know, we're looking at optics, and my concern is, and, and as pointed out by Judith Mayer, was that we can't have two people weigh in on the Gateway Area Plan, have requests that we consider to retain it as a stand, I, I, oh, see, I'm trying to look at my notes, and I apologize, I've been sick going on 10 days, probably running a fever. But anyway, I, I just want to point out, but both of these individuals who currently must recuse themselves will no longer, my understanding, will have to. And so Judith said that she was really distressed when she read David's recommendation to have this folded into the general plan, eliminating the, the Gateway Area Plan as a separate element. She said this could be done and retain many of the recommendations that we already have, but frankly, it's a slap in the face to the Planning Commission and to the public who have already put in such effort to create the area plan as an entity unique to the Gateway area. What folding these items into the general plan and eliminating the general, the Gateway Area Plan as a separate element would do is it would allow all five council members to vote on it, in effect, vote on those policies despite the conflict of interest that the Fair Political Practice Commission staff have already identified, which is the reason that, you know, our council members have recused themselves from the Gateway Area Plan. She said that she was confused and, and wanted to know why the Planning Commission agenda didn't have this on their agenda last night, whereas the City Council agenda we did, and that she felt like there would be no input from the Planning Commission, and she felt like it was very appropriate to talk about it last night. And I understand, you know, the other planning commissioners were, you know, not prepared, so the, it was decided by the Chair, Scott Davies, that because it wasn't specifically agendized, that they wouldn't spend a lot of time on it. And so they did not. But I, you know, we've always taken our cue from the Planning Commission on these, in particular, advice for the general plan, and I, I guess, yeah, I, I, that was a whole lot of saying, I would like to maintain the Gateway Area Plan as an individual element. I think it's wonderful that we have, all this work has brought to light that policies that we feel should be citywide, and I think if you're talking about, you know, saving money, the financial perspective, the fact that we could be losing $250,000 of the Salk grant, that's how we save money. And, and as, you know, Meredith, excuse me, Councilmember Matthews pointed out, we're almost there. Feels like you're pulling out the carpet from underneath us, and we've worked so hard. I mean, suffice it to say, I know I've stayed up many nights, I've cried many tears, that the community has worked so hard, and so much that they've had their own community forums, I think to date, maybe five of them, maybe six, that's a lot of work, to all of a sudden say, nah, just kidding, we're gonna do something else now. Sorry, that's what I have to say.
So I, I want to be really clear. I came here with a question on behalf of a lot of constituents, and I really appreciate, Councilmember Matthews, your view is, I asked for your opinion, it's, it's different than what I, the question I brought to the table, but I appreciate the respect with you, in with which you gave me the answer. So I don't think that it's a slap in the face or pulling the rug out to bring a question to the table that I'm respectfully asking and not pushing forward on behalf of, of many-
I apologize.
Excuse me, on behalf of many constituents. So it, you know, there, I don't even understand the intensity of this. It was meant to be a discussion, and I'm just going to leave it at that.
And I want to add to, just as the, the person that sets the agendas, that I also in that meeting said, you know, yeah, these are good policies, and I think they should apply broadly in our community. Now, whether or not that means that, you know, we get rid of the Gateway Plan, you know, that, that, that's a, that's a conversation that, that we're having. But I do support a lot of these, looking at this matrix, right, these policy items, again, and like, looking at this idea of like, what are policies that we want to see implemented in our city, as things that could be enormously beneficial citywide. Again, things that we talked about in that meeting, looking at, you know, multiple strategies to promote affordability, mixed-income neighborhoods, owner-occupied affordable housing as a community amenity, partnership with housing partner collaborations, seeking partnerships with the Wiat tribe and other equity partners, right? Like, these things that we've put a lot of work into the Gateway Plan that, again, should be disseminated citywide. However, yeah, at, at this point, too, I am, I'm kind of hesitant to go nuclear on, on the Gateway Plan, just because, again, yeah, that, that work that we really have put in. But what I, I see here as, you know, the main possibility in my mind, and what I would like to promote and see, is kind of a yes and, right, that we keep, keep and retain the Gateway element, but also, you know, looking at, yes, what policy, and, and really keeping that, that forefront of like, what, not looking at those specific things that are in code, like, what does this facade look like? How high are the buildings, right? But policy-wise, like, what do we want to see in our city? And this item really actually was supposed to be in couple with talking about our vision statement, but again, I think this agenda seemed a little too unwieldy and, and large to have a really meaningful collaborative discussion about the vision statement. And so, again, it kind of, you know, deframes it in my mind in wanting to, to talk about, you know, what, what is that vision we want to see for Arcata in the general plan? And it probably includes a lot of these policies. And so, in a long, roundabout way of saying, though maybe I wasn't directly mentioned in the staff report, I definitely said, yes, I do want to see policies like this, maybe not every single one, but a lot of these policies, citywide. But at this point, right, like we were saying, we're, we're at that finish line, and to see that Gateway element retained, mostly just because, and, and I kind of sense that we're, we're going that way anyway, so maybe I won't belabor us and ask a bunch of questions, but just, you know, on, on a general thinking level, thinking of things like, how will the community benefits program be affected? How will we work in designing, you know, building heights in different form-based codes? What does that look like across the city? And so, kind of thinking about some of those questions, and just how much work we've really put into, like, the community benefits program, and seeing that, you know, maybe not directly exist in the Gateway, or, you know, the possibility that we have something like that in, in these other codes, in these other form-based codes that we're looking at creating in these opportunity zones. So that was kind of a long-winded way of saying, I would like to see the Gateway element retained, but I also would like to, and maybe support the Planning Commission in exploring which of these policies should be disseminated citywide, and which ones are already kind of in the general plan already, and which ones could be added to kind of bolster what already exists in the current draft. So that's how I feel about that.
Yeah, and I absolutely agree with that. But I will say, I have never known Councilmember Atkinsalzar to be anything but knowledgeable and well-intentioned and deliberate with her voice, and so it was a good question to ask. I mean, it really was, it, it made me think, but at the end of the day, I just want to get this over the finish line.
Yeah. And I'm happy to let you three get it over the finish line. And just, you know, because I feel like I've, I've said this, and I don't think it's being heard, so I'm going to punt to our attorney, and just, if, you know, to, if you could reiterate in your own words, the fact that whatever is voted on in that Gateway Plan, whether it's as it is now, or if it was folded in, the Gateway things, I, I am recused on, I would not be voting on those specific things. Because that's my understanding.
That's correct.
Right? So I, no matter what, I'm not voting on it. Thanks.
That is correct. Um, I would, however, maybe if we're kind of, I don't know, I think we're kind of nearing the end of the discussion here, it sounds like, but maybe provide a little bit of direction if, if other folks are supportive, but I would like to give our Planning Commission some more work. Oh, yeah, we'll have public comment, too. But we can get, we can get direction.
I have my hand up for a very long time. I know I'm on Zoom, and it's hard to know, but I just want to-
Yeah. Okay, we'll, we'll go to you in one second, but just as maybe, if other folks are, are supportive of this, see, see some, you know, direction to give our Planning Commission some more work, because of course they need that. our planning commission some more work. Um, because of course they need that right now. Um, to, to explore, you know, which of these policies would be better applied citywide, and could be applied citywide, um, and, and what the planning commission sees, you know, as important within kind of looking at this matrix document here. And, um, yeah, Kimberly, please, go ahead.
Okay. I, first, I want to apologize to Atkin, uh, council member Stacy Atkinson Zara, because there was no disrespect whatsoever intended. I was merely repeating what I heard at last night's planning commission. The rug being pulled out was mine, but that wasn't directed at you, it was just directed in general of having to no longer keep it as an element, felt like that. Maybe I was a little dramatic, it's been a very intense evening. Um, but I love the idea of consulting the planning commission, uh, about which policies should be included citywide. I think that all of this great work that we've done has really brought, uh, to the table and shed light on those things that we do think are important and want to have citywide. Um, Judith gave an example of, such as like, cities like San Francisco have zoning codes specific to individual neighborhoods. Each have their own zoning, zoning, uh, categories, and, um, and there's a lot of ways of doing this. So bringing it, you know, back to the planning commission, and asking, you know, some direction, or, you know, seeing what direction they might recommend, and going forward on that. I want to definitely explore those ideas, um, because, you know, as pointed out by, I guess, many of us, um, there were a lot of policies, um, that were great policies. Not a lot, but there were several policies for sure, um, that could be, uh, applied
Okay. Um, at this point, I was just reminded that we have to open it up for public comment. I, I thought all the public comment happened. No, we're on a new agenda item. Um, so I would invite folks to, to please come up to the podium, if you are here in person to make comment, um, and if you are on Zoom, now's a good time to, to begin by raising that hand.
Hello, my name's Joanne McGary, and I have followed this, um, process for the months that, um, the gateway plan has been, um, made visible and, um, available to the public. I, um, really do think that whoever chooses to do their urban planning dissertation on what Arcata did, um, in the years of 2019 to whenever, um, in planning for their future, it will make probably a very interesting dissertation. But I really do think that, um, we, for so long, the history of this whole process has been people asking, but what about the general plan? And what about people getting much more involved like they historically did in previous general plan activities? And then all of a sudden, this big elephant of a plan called Gateway, you know, came first and foremost in everybody's, um, mind. And it, it's just sort of astonishing to me that our city is always having to like, react. The previous discussion we had about the Middle East, you know, we are not prepared to deal with these kinds of things. We don't plan our planning. And, um, it is not, um, just and right to all of a sudden pivot to, oh, let's just forget the gateway plan and just incorporate all those wonderful concepts, you know, citywide. You know, I'm not a big fan of the gateway plan including its name, but, um, we have come this far, and this is the way we need to proceed. And yes, the general plan is really important. There's some good things that can be, um, culled from the gateway plan and culled from other, um, ideas, you know, and put into the general plan. But don't mess this, you know, don't stir the pot anymore on this. Um, I'm sad that only three of you have to vote on it, and, and the decision to go to the FPPC was an interesting one to discover, you know, the conflicts of interest. So we have what we have, and like I say, it's gonna make a great story, um, for somebody who, you know, does a academic paper on it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Ursula Newman, and, um, I feel that it's a big but important topic to extend stuff from the gateway plan into other areas. I think it's important, like what you guys said, is to start small and go from there. Like, let's wrap up the gateway plan and move on. You've already fought really hard for it, so. Um, anyways, I know you just said that the extension of the gateway plan doesn't necessarily mean taller buildings, but I still want to say this, which I'm sure you have already heard from many people. But, um, I think that buildings of four stories or more, or, and/or allowing commercial stores throughout Arcata is poor planning. Um, we don't have that much space to work with when it comes to city planning in Arcata. Um, I believe we can facilitate more housing and low-income housing into areas like the gateway area. Um, there's a lot of underdeveloped and underappreciated areas that can be better incorporated into Arcata as enjoyable and affordable neighborhoods. Um, other areas that we can maybe look to for change is the Giantoli area and the southernmost section of West End Road. Um, we are here in Arcata, and we are on Wiat land, and because of the history of colonization in this area, the cities are really not planned well to begin with. Um, the land has a history of being industrialized heavily for monetary gain. And, uh, a great example of this is to look at what we have surrounding our bay, and, um, you know, and then, uh, also, along the safety corridor, there's like a big dump that they just buried with dirt. Like, in most places, the bay would be this ritzy place, but instead, it's been industrialized for monetary gain. So anyways, I think that seven-story buildings and higher densities in all of Arcata opens up the gates to the wolves, and people would just come and buy up any and all land to put up apartments. So I'm against anything over four, three stories in all of Arcata. But that's not a topic for today. But anyways, um, I think that, thank you for continuing to include the community in this, these discussions, and I think we all look forward to discussing an extension of certain gateway area policies to other places, but I hope you guys can just stick to what you fought for, and not make it too complicated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next commenter, please.
Well, folks, it's been quite a night, and we're enduring, and we're trying to carry on. My name's Lori Waldorf. I've been a homeowner in the Sunset area in Arcata since 85. Uh, my husband and I are retired now. We've developed our property almost to the max, and I am very disturbed about what's moving forward. Uh, just as last year, Alliance has become the screaming, it, it sounds like a motocross. Probably on the hour, we hear somebody on a motorcycle or a truck with a modified muffler, screaming up into our peaceful neighborhood. Um, you cannot supplant, there has been, Meredith speaks to this, how many, um, years and meetings and community input for Gateway? That is a separate issue. We're not ready to put Gateway into any open parcel in the general plan. As a homeowner, we have been paying taxes into the city for years, and we bought with the idea, we know our zoning, this is a guarantee, we know how dense it's gonna get, the noise factor, the enjoyment of being able to, uh, run, you know, jog on the street. I won't ride my bicycle in, in Sunset. It is a parking nightmare. We are dense, uh, you know, drive through it. If there are two full-size trucks, you can't do, uh, you can't go down western. It is almost bumper to bumper of cars. So any kind of future planning as infill, that there will be no parking provided, is not based on reality. I have neighbors on my block. It's a duplex, it's, uh, the rentals. We have an awful lot of rent, rentals. That's fine. We get to know them, we're neighborly, we help them out. It's a, it's a, uh, it's a duplex, four-bedroom, two-bedroom. How many cars do they have? Six. Next door to that is one of the original Bundalos, two-bedroom, one bath. They must have eight people living there at any given time. There are typically seven cars, then their friends come, and, um, there is absolutely nowhere to park. We cannot take these open properties in our three neighborhoods that are being looked at, and completely destroy people's homeowners, renters', uh, right of privacy, right of sunlight, r- right of, uh, peace, and put a urban, four-story, five-story building there. That is just, that's inappropriate. It's, it's--
Thank you, Lori.
So, folks, we've got to be very--
That is your three minutes. Thank you.
--vision and intelligence--
Thank you. That is your three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Hi, council members. Glenn Caldwell, I live on Western Avenue in the Sunset. This issue came to my awareness as, you know, extending the gateway planning guidelines and criteria into all of Arcata. And, uh, the first thing that was on my radar months ago was the implementation measure to, um, increase the density and change the zoning in five Arcata neighborhoods. So I am not in favor of that. Please don't do it. Um, as other people are gonna tell you and have told you, um, wishing cars to go away is not making them go away. Please, if, complete the gateway project, increase density in that part of town. Great. Do that. Great. Don't do it in the rest of Arcata. We're already densified. We already have ADUs and duplexes that are allowed to be built on single-family parcels. Please don't do it. Take it slow. Do the gateway first. See how it goes. Here's the final question for you guys. If you really believe that the citizens of Arcata would want to have that kind of densification brought into the rest of the neighborhoods in Arcata, put it on the ballot. Let people vote on it. Don't do it by zoning, just willingly changing the zoning in this town. Put it on the ballot, let people vote. If you think that the residents of Arcata in these neighborhoods are in favor of allowing an ex, a very large increase in density in their neighborhoods, let them vote on it. Thanks.
Thank you, Glenn. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Katie Pretzinger Longcar. I live on California. I'm a nurse. I've been in the community since 1974. I, I, the gateway thing, I've been very cognizant of, living on the lower part of California, watching the development of HSU is concerning to many people that I know. I would think that the best way, because there are 311, uh, residences available for rent on Craigslist right now, AUD, whatever, furnished, unfurnished, because HSU is not coming even close to their desired, um, we have no idea what the future is gonna hold for higher education, for four, for four-year universities. They're going down, two-year universities are going up. We don't know. You know, COVID opened a lot of, uh, questions to everyone. But I think that the wisest way to plan for the future is to go ahead, like has been said before me, to go ahead, do the gateway thing, and see how it works. See how it's incorporated into the community as the community incorporates what the university is doing. Why set all this in action only to find out that, wow, this isn't happening? And we just threw all this together. I, the other thing I can tell you is, um, living on California, I was on Sunset all my years at Humboldt, and then I've been on California ever since. I have personally given first aid, not first aid, um, well, one child died riding his bike to HSU across California where, I mean, LK Wood, where it intersects with California. Every single day when I drive home, there is a near bad accident involving cars, kids, stuff like that. We have to see how each little thing affects our community, because, because they do. Each, when you make a broad decision to make these all-encompassing changes to an area without the infrastructure in place, the planning just looks really poor, and the community just gets, people want to, you know, just throw up their hands and say, oh, well, I'm not used to doing this, I never have. This is the first time I've ever spoke to any of you, or, uh, this is the first time I've ever taken the podium in this facility. I just really hope that we don't make broad-range stuff. You guys have worked really hard on the gateway, I understand that. Let's put that in action and see what happens from there, okay? And see what happens with everything else that's coming up at the same time, the university and everything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to cede my time to Fred Wise.
Okay. Say his name, okay.
Good evening.
I'll allow it.
It's up to you, Sarah, you know.
I'm Fred Wise, uh, of ArcataOne.com. Um, some quotes from this evening, from the city manager and the city attorney. There are a lot of policies, some of the principles, some of the concepts. Um, Councilman, uh, Alzard, excuse me, Salazar, um, he spoke very clearly. There's nothing wrong with what you spoke, I quoted you. Um, what I find is that the written staff report, what the proposal was improper and deceitful. The city attorney is with us tonight. I will point out that these misleading and untruthful staff reports are far too common, and I would love to talk to you about that. Um, I'm in an unusual position here, where when I'm prepared, I think you've already clarified. So, um, I need to skip around a little bit. The proposal says whether to retain, I'm quoting, whether retain the gateway area plan as a standalone element of the general plan, or distribute the new policy into other general plan elements to be applicable citywide. You've answered that. Um, the, the staff, written staff report asks the decision to retain or dissolve this gateway plan. You've answered that. The written staff report has actually five distinct issues, and I think they need to be separated for clarity. One is, are some of the principles going to be put in, or are all the principles going to be put in? You've answered that, some. Um, two, would the gateway area plan be retained or dissolved? You've answered that, to be retained. Third, if it were to be put into the, uh, general plan, if a separate element were to be removed, would the council members who have recused themselves continue to recuse themselves? You answered that. Thank you. Fourth, uh, which I think is the heart of what you're talking about, is the gist of what was talked about the October 24th joint study session meeting, let's use the form-based code, the streamlined approval, the ministerial review, incorporate that citywide. Fine. And the fifth, which is, uh, not spoken specifically, but is what is the process for incorporating code to determine specific neighborhoods and how they would use these principles? In terms of the, the principles, there's 123 individual principles in the staff report. I have them in a spreadsheet, which I find useful for sorting, and you can just designate which ones are useful. I'll share that spreadsheet with anyone. Um, the, uh, many policies that were developed through the great, great process, we all agree. Uh, I've said this, Commissioner Mayer said this, many people have said this, they should be incorporated into the general plan. Not necessarily now. The general plan is a living document and can be amended at any time. Uh, to have all the policies, absolutely not. Such as, allow for buildings over four stories using community benefits program. I don't see that as a citywide policy. Or do not establish maximum residential density standards. The, uh, larger, bigger, major policies of the gateway plan don't translate well on a citywide basis. Um, we'll point out that the gateway area plan is essentially an experiment in dense infill here in Arcata. Uh, we have promises of workforce, affordable housing, homeownership opportunities, but these have not yet been worked out. There's still aspirations. We don't know how they'll be worked out. Uh, we still want them to be. And I say, build three or four apartment buildings, whether it's two or three years from now, see how it works. And you can bring in a lot of the major principles into the general plan after that point. Um, as has been said, to abandon the gateway plan, and, and abandon it as a separate element of the gateway plan, of, of the general plan, excuse me, uh, I regard as deceitful, insulting, and, uh, against the three or four years of work. I think that if this was-- think that if this was been presented to the people of the city of Arcata three or four years ago, it would have been rejected outright. From what I hear, the people of Arcata do not trust this process of establishing new zoning in Arcata. That's why doing it in gateway first, which we all are agreeing on, and then seeing how it works out, would be more beneficial. The best of the policies can be incorporated, as I said, at any time. And I find myself in an unusual position speaking before you, because usually I'm in opposition, or I feel I'm in opposition, but tonight it seems that we're all in agreement. I regard the staff report, as I said, very misleading. It suggests something which the council members did not suggest at the October 24th meeting. You suggested the opposite. I find this to be a waste of my time, a waste of the council's time. I'm glad to get it through, and we have clarity. That's it. I encourage the city manager, or the city attorney, excuse me, to contact me. Two weeks ago, we had a misstatement or falsehood in the staff report. It happens regularly. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Fred. Not seeing any other in-person comment. We'll open it up to Zoom.
All right. Her first online is Colin. Go ahead, Colin.
Good evening. This is Colin Fisk with CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. I just want to underline that most of the policies that were developed for the gateway plan are just good land use and transportation policies. In fact, mostly they mirror policies that are already found in other parts of the general plan, but importantly, they also build on and strengthen those policies. For example, the general plan has policies meant to minimize the need for costly and environmentally unfriendly parking lots and infill areas, and the gateway plan policy takes the logical next step of calling for most parking mandates to be eliminated. Similarly, the general plan has policies calling for prioritizing walking, biking, and transit. And the gateway plan makes a lot of those policies more concrete and specific by calling for things like wider sidewalks and more protected bike lanes and better pedestrian crossings. There are a few policies, of course, in the gateway plan that are specific to the gateway area, but I think you'll find when you go through them that there are relatively few of those, and generally, they can be easily incorporated into the form-based code for the gateway area, because the zoning code is already incorrectly the home for the specific rules and regulations affecting development and implementing the policies. So I just want to make the point that overall, the gateway area plan as a general plan element has turned out to be really just the next evolution of the city's existing body of policy intended to support people-friendly and environment-friendly community and transportation. And there's no reason for those policies to be limited to just one part of the city. So we do encourage you to apply almost all of the gateway policies citywide, and thank you for bringing this forward and discussing it.
Thank you, Colin. Anyone else on Zoom?
Our next speaker is Greg. Go ahead, Greg.
Hi. Thank you. Yeah, Greg King in Arcata. I can't disagree more with Colin Fisk about applying the gateway policies citywide. There's some kind of illusory aspect to the idea that if we build these communities with new, you know, road striping, with perhaps narrow lanes, et cetera, but we don't at all really restrict cars, that somehow things will be safer. There's some kind of psychosis happening right now in Arcata where people are driving extremely fast, even on narrow lanes in little neighborhoods, in little neighborhoods where the speed limit should be 15 miles an hour, and that's something you should do. And you see people zooming through at 35, 40, and really, truly crazy driving. And this will never be curbed unless you physically curb it. And the city is doing nothing at all to physically curb this dangerous, and as we've seen, lethal driving. Some of it is because of a distracted driver, a drunk driver, and the driver who had a medical emergency, et cetera. And, you know, if you have barriers between cars and people, on bikes and pedestrians, then you are providing safety. If you have paths, if you have guardrails, and things like speed humps. I was just in Portland and Corvallis and Ashland, and Corvallis is putting speed humps all over their city. That's a college town, you know, where the college is the predominant industry. And the speed humps have the narrow little slots for the emergency vehicles, and they work very well, and they slow people down. And that's the only thing that is going to slow people down, is physical driver restraints. And until you do that, more people will die. People are going to keep dying and being severely injured on the streets of Arcata due to your inaction. And I can't state this strongly enough, that as long as you're focusing on increasing density without doing something about the lethality and the danger of the driving in this city, you will find that incidents such as collisions with cyclists and pedestrians will go up. Nearly 20% of the 50,000, I in this country, every, by a car are cyclists and pedestrians. And you need to do something about that. That's your highest calling right now, is to protect public safety, and you're not doing it because the most dangerous thing in Arcata today is cars. And until you address that, you are not doing your job. You have abrogated your responsibility to the people of this city, and if you're going to provide more dense housing, and everyone's going to come with a car.
Thank you, Greg. That is your three minutes. Thank you for calling in.
Our next speaker is Lisa. Go ahead, Lisa.
Dear council members, the gateway area is a specific area identified through a city process several years ago as an area that is ripe for future redevelopment. The policies that have been created over the last couple of years have been tailored for this specific area of town with redevelopment in mind. The idea of dissolving the gateway area plan in order to apply these policies to the entire town would be a questionable and concerning move. We do not need or want to redevelop the entire town. Nobody has agreed to that. Why this would be needed, given that the gateway provides more than enough opportunity for infill development over the next 20 years, is beyond me. I hope the council would acknowledge that if you do decide to apply these policies citywide, it would be necessary to conduct a robust outreach program to bring in the larger community to weigh in on how this policy change would impact their specific neighborhoods. Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker is a call-in user. Go ahead, call-in user.
Hello. Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. My name is Lisa Pelletier, and I'm calling to weigh in on this. This is a major, major policy change, and it just came up recently in a special meeting. And so I'm wondering, like the other Lisa who called in, why you haven't held a public forum for people to weigh in on this. This is so major and such a, you know, such a left turn. And I just wonder why you haven't done more community engagement on this, and you want to decide this tonight, which I was told there was going to be a vote tonight. I don't know if you'll get to that. But anyway, it's in your staff report that allowing for buildings over four stories, even though it requires a zoning change, it mentions allowing for buildings over four stories. And to me, that's opening the door to have taller buildings throughout the city, even if it's not, the zoning change hasn't been made yet. And I just would like you to not come to a hasty decision, bring the public in, and give people an opportunity to weigh in. And that's, that's my, also on the, on the safety, traffic safety. I almost got hit on K Street the other day, and I was at a stoplight and pressed the button, and the lights were flashing, and this car just, cars just sailed through it. They're going 30 miles an hour or more, and I almost got hit, and that's happened several times. So I hope that you will move and put that on the agenda, too. I want to echo what Greg King said. And other than that, I'll just wish you a good evening. Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker is also a call-in user. Go ahead. You're being asked to unmute, call-in user, number two. All right. We'll come back to you. Jim Moore, go ahead.
Hello. Good evening.
Oh, okay. Go ahead. Hold up, Jim.
Hi. This is Kathleen Stanton. Good evening, council and staff. This proposal before you tonight to extend gateway policies to the whole city, including Bayside, is just too drastic and too extreme. And I believe our community really is a patchwork of different kinds of neighborhoods that need to be respected and planned and zoned accordingly. This blanket proposal to allow high rises everywhere is just poor planning. Distinctive communities like Bayside need special attention to density allowances so new development fits the existing neighborhoods and don't stick out like sore thumb. The city needs to adhere to the existing housing element. So new development is done, and I quote, "in a way that allows for gradual, rather than drastic, changes from surrounding development density or type." The city needs to adhere to the existing housing elements, and again, I quote, "so that design features, such as gradual increases in building height, are not just thrown out the window, but incorporated in neighborhoods throughout the city." The city really needs to go back to the drawing board and design new density proposals that fit existing neighborhoods and maintain compatible design standards and community character. I believe that we need to emphasize the need for more infill development with ADUs before passing zoning regulations that drastically increase density and building height. Here in Bayside, we have a lot of oversized and half-acre lots. And I was really sorry to learn at your last meeting two weeks ago that Mr. Lawyer said he didn't have the time in the next six months to apply for a loan program to help property owners build more ADUs. I believe this would be a very popular program, and encourage you to direct staff to get this done immediately. This is the kind of infill we need especially in Bayside. Also, the city's desire to not provide parking for dense housing developments is unworkable, because most residents and shoppers will have a car and need parking. Without this, there will be a flood of cars, not only in the immediate neighborhood, but on adjacent streets as well. The city must come up with a mass transit plan before and not after they approve zoning for high-density apartments and commercial businesses. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Kathleen. All right. Do we have any more commenters on Zoom?
Hello?
Go ahead, Jim.
Hi. I just, with great relief, want to say that I echo everything that's been said. Finish gateway, learn from it, and extend the good policies as and where appropriate. If we want more housing, start with looking into reducing the number of short-term rentals like Airbnb. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.
Can the other Jim go ahead? Somehow, all of the attendees have been lost from my Zoom, so I'm just going off memory of who had their hands up to see if they could unmute, but I don't see how they're going to be able to unmute themselves.
Can I say something while we're waiting for Zoom people?
Yeah.
You know, you've got, well, ask for transparency. Because of the Brown Act, we aren't able to talk to each other about this in private, which is why it's on the agenda tonight, so we can discuss it in public. It was a question that Stacy asked that we put on the agenda for the transparency of getting it out and having a public conversation about it. It's not something that we can talk about in private, and we're doing it in public. So that's why it's here.
Yeah. And just to add, this is, if this was to be a thing that would go forward, this is the beginning of the public process for it. This is, here we are. The public's here, and we're starting that process.
Our next one, screen name PC. Go ahead. PC, go ahead. All right. We'll try Carrie, or, oh, go ahead.
Hi. This is Jim. I was unable to succeed on my other phone here. Can you hear me?
We can.
Perfect. I am actually a member of the gateway, and I think what the message is tonight, that people are really fearful of what this policy means, what's being presented us right now, and I've been living it, and we've been inputting on it, and trying very hard to work within the policies that exist. And I'd just like to say at this point, to start with, if it's not good enough for the rest of the city, then it's probably not good enough for the gateway, and I think this is probably going to need more work. It speaks tonight to the fears of building. It speaks to the fear of traffic. It speaks to the fear of high density. Work out these issues with massing with existing neighborhoods. Preserve open spaces. Respect single-family homes. High density is coming to other parts of infill zones in Arcata, so please work out these policies. Community members requested these existing policies within the gateway, just, I mean, to be, already, sorry, I'm kind of
Solar shade.
Yeah, as far as just with solar shade and everything else. Once again, I would just say, if it's not good enough for the rest of the city, you probably need to fine-tune this, because people are freaking out at the point when this is presented to them. And there is a lot of single-family homes within this area, and all these issues, and I have to say right now, that solar shadowing is not, when people have concerns about it, it's not somebody being out of housing an excuse for no development. It's an excuse for getting this right. And, you know, just on that fact, I just finished with, like, the most important things here is going to be building, massing. And there is infill coming to these areas. We already have these infill opportunity zones, other areas of Arcata, which will be, you know, at least four stories. And honestly, if bonus density is hit, they're going to be up to six stories. So I really think we need to have these conversations, and just remember, it's citing setbacks and step backs. I mean, and as far as the rest of communities, I mean, just honestly, you're not going to put the brakes on this. You really should start looking at this. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Carrie, go ahead.
Thank you. I want to speak specifically to the Bayside issues. I'm a Bayside resident. At least twice each day, it's impossible, or nearly impossible, to pass through the area around Jacobi Creek School due to parents driving children to the school in single-user private vehicles. This is directly across the street from where a proposed 80-unit development would occur. I live next door to that proposed development site. It's already a stark reality for me that were I to suffer a medical emergency, or my house were to start on fire during these certain times of day, any assistance reaching me in a timely manner is grossly diminished. And now you want to assume that you can add 80 additional housing units with no parking accounted for. I will have virtually no guarantee that emergency help could reach us if needed during these times. There are numerous times that I've had to wait five to 10 minutes just to reach my driveway, and I know that sounds small, but it actually adds up. To circle back to the parking issues, we already find that during these drop-off and pickup times at school, if there's any schedule advance, people routinely park on Old Arcata Road. And when we attempt to leave our property, it is impossible to see if cars are coming in either direction without actually pulling out into the road first. Let's assume, although history shows us as an underestimation, that each of the proposed 80 units only has one vehicle associated with it. Where are these cars going to go? Never mind that all of this goes on top of the fact that we have been told for years that Old Arcata Road would be fixed and the safety improved. About two weeks ago, I called the city, and I was assured that we'd be seeing something happening soon, and that signage would go up telling us about what was happening. The signs went up, and it said intermittent work in November and December. Today's November 15th, and nothing's happened. Now the signs have been changed to say that work is delayed due to weather. I'm not sure who's managing a project like this, that they would think that there wouldn't be weather impacts if they started in November in Humboldt County. But all this circles back to public planning and the city not necessarily doing its due diligence in making these decisions. While the cry for affordable housing is very valid, and one that we should all support, the city the city is duty-bound to make sure that the infrastructure of these areas considered can honestly absorb what is being proposed. This area of Bayside simply cannot. Maybe if you wanted to look at relocating Jacoby Creek School and using that property for the parking of an 80-unit complex, there might be something to talk about. But obviously, that thought is every bit as ludicrous as us a thought that it would be okay to build an 80-unit complex in this area in the first place. Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is a call-in user, number four. You're being asked to unmute. Go ahead. If you're a phone-in user being asked, there you go. Go ahead.
Yeah, hi. I actually live on Highland Street, which is immediately adjacent to the property that's planned on being developed in Bayside. And, you know, to consider that the same restrictions and approach to design would be applied to that property is really concerning for us. I've noticed a lot of people have mentioned solar shading, that's a huge concern for us as our entire southern fence borders that property, heights would be concerned as well. I was wondering if there would be an opportunity for public comments on the design, if it did turn into something like that. And it sounds like if we were to apply the Gateway project design to all of Arcata, that wouldn't be an option. Sounds like it would be kind of a blanket proposal that wouldn't really provide much opportunity for the public and the local neighborhoods to weigh in on. That is a concern. Aside from that, again, I noticed that traffic has been a concern. We have a huge issue with the, there's a coffee shop that's quite popular down, just around the corner from the project that's being developed, and no considerations were given to parking on that project. It's highly impacted the neighborhood and I can't imagine an 88-unit complex. I wouldn't further complicate things in the neighborhood. So that work to move forward, I would expect that the city would be willing to accommodate the existing residents with some sort of parking restrictions for local, parking only. These are all just considerations. I know it's early in the process. I know this is kind of a blanket policy that you're looking at tonight, but I had to say something. This is a significant concern for our, our property and I just appreciate the time. Thanks.
All right, I'm going to make a call. If there's a Genevieve still on, if you could lower your hand and raise it again. There she is. All right. Go ahead, Genevieve.
Hi, thank you and good evening, council and staff. My name's Genevieve Serna. I'm a resident and homeowner here in the city of Arcata. And I absolutely understand where Meredith and Sarah and probably Kimberly are also coming from, where, you know, they've worked really, really hard on the Gateway and kind of don't want to lose the progress that they've made. But I, I did want to chime in and say that, you know, the Gateway project, I guess generally, I would, I would be in support of applying some of the Gateway policies citywide. It's a plan that's been in the works for a good long time, kind of gone through with a fine-tooth comb. And so I think if they've gone through that level of detail for one area, you can apply that same level of detail to many areas. But mostly that the Gateway was formulated to combat three really critical issues in our city, which are the housing crisis, to address street safety and mode shift, or transportation mode shift, and to combat urban sprawl. And none of these three problems are developing gradually. They're all upon us and impacting the city in a really critical way. And so we need to respond in a really critical way. And so I do think that that means densifying where we can. I'm a pretty avid bike rider in the city of Arcata, and I pass by more than my fair share of gigantic empty parking lots, underutilized, underdeveloped lots. And every time I pass them, I imagine how much better utilized they'd be if there were stores, you know, small, lower-floor commerce and people living above them. You know, frankly, I, I wouldn't be afraid of a few more neighbors near my, near my neighborhood, people who are probably not that different from me when I had just graduated and was looking for a place to stay here in Humboldt County and was fortunate enough to find a place, but I know that there are many that aren't. So I guess those are, those are my two cents. I think it's a thoughtful plan and, and I think some thoughtful ideas that can be widely applied. Thank you.
All right, if there are any other public speakers, please go ahead and raise your hand. I think we've gotten them all that are on here.
Yep.
So there is no more public comment online.
All right, I'll bring it back to the council, to any, for any last-minute thoughts or ideas, or maybe some consensus on if we want to give the Planning Commission some direction to look at some of, which of these policies we would want to see citywide while still retaining our Gateway plan is what our consensus sounded like, but.
I think that's, I'm on board with that, what Sarah said.
Do we need a motion for that, or is Planning Commission direction enough that way? I don't know.
I think it would be great to have a motion. Yeah, and a vote.
Hands up.
I just was just clarifying. So where, where the motion is to ask the Planning Commission to choose which one of them we should do, or are we going to go through and pick them? I'm just confused.
I think that we are going to make a motion to keep the Gateway area plan separately while directing the Planning Commission to look through these things and see which ones could be applicable to the general plan.
Thank you. I just wasn't sure if we were going to embark on that journey right now or if we were giving it to the Planning Commission. So that's all. Thank you.
So that was the motion. I liked the motion.
I will second that motion.
Kimberly has her hand up.
Yeah, I was.
Okay, well, we have a motion, a second on the floor, and then yes, Kimberly, we can hear from you.
Yeah, I was just trying to make a motion, trying to second the motion, just trying to get recognized.
You're part of it, yes. Okay, we have the motion. We have the second for that direction. All in favor, aye.
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 Okay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, folks. And that closes that item for us and now takes us back to oral and written communications. This is a time for, whoa, I should read the script. This is a time for people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. If you are here in person, please line up at the podium. If you are on Zoom, raise your Zoom hand. If you're on film, press star nine. Due to the Brown Act, we cannot talk about unagendized items, but we can respond to statements. You have three minutes. Take it away.
My name's Joanne McGary, and this evening has really made me very, very aware of a lot of things that are lacking in our town. And in a previous council makeup, I had brought that Peace and Justice Center sign that I had just acquired, and it was soon after the McKinley statue, I think, came down. And I seriously offered it to replace the McKinley statue in the center of our town because I really do think Arcata is and can really reflect its desire to be known as a place of peace and justice. And speaking of justice, justice for Josiah at the 15th of the month. And so I wore this shirt in honor of that other sad reality of an unsolved murder. And I'm just thinking that we have a new Equity Arcata thing established. So when issues come up that have very much energized people, I think it's really important for our leaders and our staff to consider providing a venue for people to talk about these things so that it doesn't become such an inflammatory and, I mean, I'm all for the democracy and the free speech that occurred tonight, but I just think sometimes if we are better prepared to deal with this, because we have created ourselves as an international city of peace, we've called it the Arcata Peace Plaza, we've made a commitment to operate with the idea that, you know, peace and justice and nonviolence is our ethic. So I'm just putting it out there that along with things like the unhoused and the vulnerable issues that we have and the climate issues that I'm very, very concerned about, we need to be, I think, hopefully better prepared for what's to come. And I think tonight showed that. So anything I can do to help, by loaning the sign to put up somewhere and have people come and talk and have coffee and tea and, you know, solve the problems of the world. I'm here to kind of participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Any other in-person comments?
Thank you. I want to thank and commend the city council for your work as evidenced tonight and many, many times. Just as a small aside, the, there's a lot about the Gateway plan that I consider to be infeasible. I'd like to see it work, but I don't see it happening as it's progressing currently. Just one thing, it showed the build-out of 3,500 units. Let's call that 7,000 people. To put this in perspective, if you've been to Guelita, California, UCSB, that's one of the more densely areas of the West Coast, they've got 778 units per square mile. Gateway would be, on a square-mile basis, 17,000. New York City is 27,000 people per square mile. London is 15,000 on an average basis. If there were 3,500 units in Gateway, it would be 30,000 people per square mile. It's an unfeasible number. I've asked our community development director to support this number. I don't think he can. I'm all in favor of Gateway. I'm all in favor of housing, but it's not going to be as massive as it's been described. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Not seeing anyone else. Do we have anybody online? Please raise your hand if you are online. I have no online public comment. All right, that takes us to council and staff reports. Do we have any staff updates? We have no staff updates. Any council updates?
I will give a quick one. Just wanted to point out the beautiful lights on the plaza and thank the chamber for those. So I appreciate seeing the downtown lit up. That's nice. And also, kind of in association with my HCOG position, I serve on the State Road Use Charge Technical Advisory Committee. And so if anyone is interested in like, kind of knowing what that is, that's Senate Bill 339. And just in summary, with the creation of more efficient vehicles and the introduction of a lot more electrical vehicles, the money received for gas for our roads is consistently declining, and I'm sure we can all agree, the roads are not improving. So we actually need more money, not less money. And so I'm, I serve on a committee that's actually been in place long before I joined to come up with pilot programs that will be presented to the state legislature for their discussion, which would be interesting to hear that. So anyways, it's just something that I would like people to be aware of that is coming in the future, that transition from a gas tax to a road use charge will be, it will be happening. So just to be aware of that and not, and not in the near future. It's going to take a long time.
There are e-bike rebates and they're going fast. Apply through the state of California and apply through the Redwood Coast Energy Authority to double up on your best possible rebate. Don't forget. Kimberly, do you have any reports to add?
Yeah, I wanted to report that Kuna had another successful Clean the Sidewalk event. We had a two-day participatory budget for the Valley West North Arcata businesses. In fact, council member Matthews attended both and got some great photos. In collaboration with animal and community advocate Jan Carr, myself and Six Rivers Brewery, sounds like I've had a few too many, we are doing a coat drive for both humans and their canine companions, and we're also collecting tents, tarps, and sleeping bags. You can drop them off at Six Rivers Brewery Tuesday through Saturday, or if you are unable to drop them off, call myself. My number's at the city website, but it's 707-633-3867. Or you can call Jan Carr also for a pickup and we'll get them out to the community. And her number's 707-672-0049. And just also wanted to remind as council member Akinselser brought up, don't forget that Small Business Saturday and Cyrus Monday, and then Santa's Vintage Fire Truck on December 3rd. And we'll be also hosting, Kuna will have a Clean the Sidewalk event right before that from 9:00 to 11:00. That's all I've got.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. Shop local and we're adjourned.